Great, thanks so much. Okay, everybody, welcome to the public hearing of March 1st. We're convening this meeting by electronic means and so some folks are in person and some are at home or elsewhere electronically. Just remember to keep your video on so we can confirm quorum and if you're going to leave at any time, just please let the clerks know so we can mark you as absent. If anybody loses connection during any time, we'll suspend the process and make sure that you get back online. All these proceedings can be viewed on live stream on the YouTube link and that's tweeted out @Vancityclerk is the handle. As always, we acknowledge that we're on the traditional unceded territories, the Muskans, Swamshans, Sabotees people and thank them for their partnership as we work toward building this great city together. And thanks also to staff, long day for clerks, want to recognize that, but also all the other folks that do such a great job. Over to Clerk Sir Rollcall.
Mayor Stewart in the chair, Counselor Carr?
Here.
Counselor D Genova?
Present.
Counselor Frye? Counselor Frye?
Oh, I'm here, sorry.
Thank you. Counselor Swanson?
Here.
Counselor Hardwick?
Present.
Counselor Weeb?
Present.
Counselor Boyle?
Present.
Counselor Domonado?
Present.
Thank you, Counselor Bly?
Present.
And Counselor Kirby Young?
Present.
You've called Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much. Just because of COVID and our precautions, all staff will be presenting or responding to questions, will be in attendance virtually and of course, hybrid options continue for council and the public. The public may participate by speaking over the phone, submitting written comments to council or speaking in person. The maximum capacity for our council chamber is 20, so virtual participation is highly recommended. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments, should limit comments to the merits of the report being considered and should also state whether they are in support or oppose the recommendations and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter for updates. Any comments and agenda items can be submitted in writing through our online web forum at vancouver.ca forward slash public dash hearing dash comments. And that link is also on Twitter at Vancityclerk. Speaking, those speaking on behalf of other persons or groups will have eight minutes to speak and only if those represented are also on the line and must not be speakers themselves. Speakers who pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay, so we'll help you through any presentations you have. And as our, we have a longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, inclusion, I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first and last name, role or title. Our role tonight at public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means council is only to consider the merits of the resoning application or heritage designation. You may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of the speaker's list. After hearing from speakers, we can approve the application, we can refuse the application or we can refer the application for further consideration. If we don't conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we'll recess and reconvene the meeting on March 8th at 6:00 PM. So we're going to start with the first item, which is miscellaneous amendments. Anybody wish to declare conflict of interest? Don't see anybody. So clerk's now going to read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability to make miscellaneous amendments to the zoning and development bylaw to improve clarity, update references, correct inadvertent errors or omissions and improve the administration of the bylaws. No correspondence has been received on this application since referral to the public hearing. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thanks very much. Speakers who'd like to speak to this item, the number is 1-833-353-8610 and the code is 39901 pound. And this number's on Twitter and on the live stream. We have Nicholas Danforth from the Resoning Centre to answer questions. There is no presentation today, so I'll just go right to the...
I have no questions, Mayor, I'm taking myself off. I thought I might have to move Weave's presentation.
No, great. So I'm just going to look again. If there's any questions to staff on this item, please put yourself on the queue, council. I don't see anybody on the queue, so now we're going to move to hear from the public. Anybody would like to speak to this item, it's 1-833-353-8610 and I'm going to check with the clerks and see if anybody's on the line or in the chambers.
No speakers on the line or in the chambers, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Second call, 1-833-353-610, 039901 pound. And got to check with the clerks on the second call here.
No speakers on the line or in chamber, Mayor.
Okay, third call. So we're going to take a five minute break. It is 6:26, we'll come back at 6:31 to finish this item. See you in five minutes. Okay, third call. So we're going to take a five-minute break. It is 6:26. We'll come back at 6:31 to finish this item. See you in five minutes. Line or in the chambers?
No one on the line or in the chambers, Mayor.
Great, okay, thanks. So we'll close the speakers list, and since we haven't had any correspondence since 5:00 PM, we can close the receipt of information. Just sorry, trying to find my script here. Right, and I'll ask if staff have any closing comments.
No closing comments, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thanks very much. Any questions to staff from council? Don't see any on the list. Can I have a mover, please?
I'll move. Councillor Carr.
Thanks, Councillor Carr. Thank you, Councillor De Genova. Over to the main queue. Any debate on this item? I don't see any. Great. So can I call a vote on this, please?
Mayor, can I have a vote assist in favor? This is councillor Boyle.
Sure can. Very much. Councillor Dominado.
Can I also get a vote assist in favor? Thank you.
Clerks have recorded both of those, and it was unanimous. Great. Okay, thanks. Council, we're moving on to item two. I need like three monitors here. Okay. Res zoning on West 28th Avenue. First, I'll ask if there's any conflicts of interest. We'll have the clerk read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by P Square Engineering and Construction to rezone 877 to 887 West 28th Avenue from single detached houses and duplicates, duplexes district to multiple dwelling district to allow for a townhouse or row house development with a maximum floor space ratio of 1.2. The general manager of planning, urban design, and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of public hearing agenda. No correspondence has been received on this application since the referral to the public hearing. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Great. Thanks so much. We don't have any speakers on this, but we do have Alison Smith here. Is everybody okay if we waive their presentation, or does anybody want to see it?
Move to waive.
Okay, if we all agree, we don't have to go through the vote, so we're fine. And all this move to questions, from questions to staff? I'm sorry, I've missed a part of the script here. One second. We have the applicant team. Is the applicant team here? Would you like to speak to their applicant?
Good evening, everybody. I'm the applicant Paymon Osaini. I have no comments.
Okay, great.
Myself and the project architect are on call if there's any questions.
Great, let's move to that now. Are there any questions from council to the staff or the applicant? Councillor Swanson, please go ahead up to five minutes.
Yeah, I have a question for the applicant. It looks like there's three rental units there now. Would the current tenants have the chance to come back to the new building at 20% below market rents?
The owners for this project have opted not to go for that option.
So the tenants won't have any option except to move to probably another expensive rental?
That is correct. I have to add that one of the tenants is the previous owner of one of the, one of the properties that has sold to their current owner. And the other tenant has been there, I think, for a couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hardwick, staff or applicant questions?
So the tenants won't have any option except to probably another expensive rental?
Oh, somebody's got their...
He's correct.
Somebody has their audio on in the background. We're getting a bit of an echo. Not sure who that is.
The clerk could mute everyone's mics, possibly, Mayor.
Thank you for the help, Councillor De Genova. Perhaps it's the applicant who might have your...
I think it's fine. Looks like it's fine now.
Okay, go ahead, Councillor Hardwick.
Yes, I'd just like to confirm that these are strata titled units, that these are not rental units. These are, are, you know, boilerplate RM 8A strata titled townhouse units.
The question to staff?
Thank you, councillor. The applicant has advised that they'll be pursuing strata on the site.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay, thanks for that. We are now going to hear from the public, and this, there are no registered speakers, so we'll make the first call for speakers. Clerks, anybody online or in the council chambers?
No one in, online or in the chamber, Mayor.
Great. Second call then, 1-833-353-8610, code 39901Pound. Anybody on the line or in the chambers?
No one on the line or in chambers, Mayor.
Thanks. So we are at 6:38. We'll come back at 6:39. We'll come back at 6:44 to finish this item. So see you in five minutes, council. Resident of the city of Vancouver. Hello, Speaker?
Hi.
Hi there.
Hi, sorry. Hi. Yeah, so I guess this is my five minutes, huh?
Yeah, if you just give us your name and whether or not you're a resident of Vancouver, then you can just go ahead for five minutes.
Great, thank you. My name is Naomi Steinberg. I'm a resident born here in Vancouver. I've been to several council meetings before with increasing concern as things develop around me on the Canby corridor. And in this particular case, I guess I just, I don't have five minutes of things to say. I just wanted to say that it's it's super intense, and the hospital is being surrounded by development, which does nothing to help anybody in any kind of recovery from anything physical or any kind of mental health. And so I really don't know where you folks are at in terms of gathering actual data, in terms of how many new units have been built, how many are needed, how many are still empty. I've been attending, you know, webinars on money laundering in the Canadian housing market. So I think it's extremely important when we're in such a sensitive area, and so many trees are coming down, and there's so much deep excavation already happening, that, because it's directly across the street from the hospital, and there's more coming online, a block away, two blocks away, you know, all over the place, that strong consideration be given to making some courageous decisions to actually say no. And I also wish somebody could help me understand why all these notices of rezoning and redevelopment application, even though the building type hasn't been decided yet, you're limiting... You say the RM 8A district allows for, and you only named two of the things that it's allowing for, instead of naming all the other possible infills. Very frustrating, and feels disingenuous. And I, if there's any conscience listening to me right now, please continue doing what you can to change the way development happens in the city of Vancouver, so we're not just lining the pockets of a few people. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you, so I'll thank you for participating tonight and ask the clerks, is there anybody else on the line or in the chambers?
No additional speakers on the line or in chamber, Mayor.
Thank you very much, clerks. And so we're with that. We're going to close the speakers list and close the receipt of public comments. And just ask the applicant if you have any closing comments.
For the comments.
Thank you. Staff have any closing comments?
No closing comments, thank you.
Thanks very much. Can I have a mover of the motion, please?
Move to councillor De Genova.
Thanks. Do you have a seconder?
Councillor Boyle.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to the main queue. I see some councillors. You'll have to put your names back on. Councillor Swanson, we're in debate now. Go ahead up to five minutes. You might be on mute.
Sorry, where's the place where we get to ask the applicant questions?
Oh, that was way at the beginning. Or way past. And now the motion is moved now, and we're in debate.
Okay, is there going to be any provision for the... I guess there's 14 tenants there now?
Yeah, where, where you kind of missed...
Number two. Yeah, sorry. So I can't vote for this. The Canby corridor is with the whole plan, doesn't have enough affordability in it for me. And in this particular case, we're evicting at least two tenants who are, you know, we're not... uh, who are, you know, we're not replacing the affordability of those two tenants. And the owner will be able to make amends selling off the condos. And here's two tenants that are going to have to go out in the world and probably rent at higher than they're paying now. So I don't think this is a good way to preserve affordability in the city, and I think we have to start paying more attention to that. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Hardwick.
Thank you. Well, I'll continue to riff off of councillor Swanson's comments about affordability. What underlies affordability is, uh, the cost of the land. And in this rezoning, we will be increasing and inflating the value of the land and the area above it. These are strata units. Um, so what that means is on July first, B C assessment is going to come in and assign, and assess them at highest and best use. And a rising tide lifts all boats. So I've said this many times before, I'll say it again. The, uh, continued practice, uh, and the Canby corridor is, is illustrative of this, where we're basically selling zoning to generate revenue, is an unsustainable model because of its impact on land inflation. I will comment on, uh, one thing that our one speaker did say, and that is that we still lack the long requested housing data that would give us an accurate, accurate and fulsome picture of where we're really sitting in the city, uh, in respect to our, uh, housing supply and, um, ultimately our demand and pace of change. So for these reasons, uh, as long as this continues, we still are not in a position to be making these kinds of decisions when the policies on, on which they're based are, in my view, fundamentally flawed because of flawed underlying assumptions. So show me the data and, um, maybe I won't be a stock record on this every time we get to a public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for, uh, councils, uh, uh, on the queue, so we'll move to the vote.
Mayor, can I have a vote assist in favor?
Yes, thanks, clerks. Councillor Boyle in favor, please.
And councillor Dominado, a vote assist in favor, please.
Thank you, clerks. And councillor Dejanova. There we go. Okay, uh, that has passed with councillor Swanson and Hardwick in opposition. Okay, councillor, we're moving on to item three, which does have, uh, speakers registered, and this is for, uh, West Thirty-seventh Avenue. Uh, if you have a conflict, please declare it now, uh, and I'll ask the clerks to read the application.
This is an application by Former Works Architectural Incorporated to rezone five three two seven to five four seven seven Oak Street and one zero zero six to one zero zero eight West Thirty-seventh Avenue from two family dwelling district to multiple dwelling district to allow for a townhouse or row house development with maximum floor space ratio of one point two. The general manager of planning, urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendations of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to the public hearing. Fifteen pieces of correspondence in support, seventeen pieces of correspondence in opposition, and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of this application. This represents all correspondence received up to five P M today.
Thanks so much. Uh, we have Austin Norrie, uh, from the, uh, Res zoning Center, uh, with, uh, a presentation. And if we could go through that, that'd be great. Uh, after that, we'll, uh, talk to the applicant. So go ahead, Austin Norrie.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, council. Are you able to hear me and see the presentation on the live stream?
We can definitely see it on the, I think it's just, uh, just coming up now on the live stream. We're all good to go.
Great, thank you. Alright, so this townhouse rezoning application is coming forward under the Canby corridor plan, and it is an application under a simplified rezoning process. The simplified process was developed in order to secure utility upgrades to accommodate additional growth within the Canby corridor. Since this proposal is to rezone the site to the RM eight A N district schedule, no form of development is required at the rezoning stage. However, public feedback for the proposed form of development will occur during the development permit phase. This simplified process reduces the processing time for townhouse rezoning applications, so it can reach public hearing in a shorter time period than a typical rezoning application. The townhouse rezoning application is located within the Oakridge Town Centre neighbourhood of the Canby corridor. The site consists of seven R T one parcels, which are being proposed to the R M eight A N district schedule. The proposals for stacked townhouses or row houses up to three stories with a maximum floor space ratio of one point two. This, uh, this proposal aligns with the Canby corridor plan, as well as the housing Vancouver strategy, strategy by adding to the diversity of Vancouver's housing stock. Townhouses and row houses provide ground-oriented, missing middle housing with outdoor spaces. In addition, these housing types are ideal for families pursuing home ownership opportunities. The site consists of seven duplex houses located at West Thirty-seventh Avenue and Oak Street. Nearby is the, oh, um, Van Dusen Botanical Garden, Eric Hamber Secondary School and Oak Meadows Park. Across the street along Oak are townhouse developments, as well as the Oakridge Transit Centre site. To the south are low-rise apartments, a seniors home and seniors hospital. The site contains eighteen rental tenancies. A tenant relocation plan will be submitted and finalized during the development permit process. A tenant relocate, the tenant relocation policy covers fourteen of the tenancies on the site. To provide additional tenant protection, the applicant has decided to extend coverage to all the rental tenants. Tenant protection will go beyond the basic requirements as applicant, as the applicant is offering increased financial compensation and relocation assistance. T, TRP specialists have also been engaging with the tenants and will be assisting in the relocation. Over five hundred postal notifications were distributed within a two-block radius of the site location. Twelve pieces of public feedback were received through the city's Shape Your City webpage. In addition, a, in addition, a petition was, um, uh, submitted containing seventeen signatures in opposition to the proposal. Project feedback included support for heightened density along an arterial street. Concerns with the proposal were that the proposal should consist of rental housing and that the existing tenant should be granted, um, right of first refusal. That also the heightened density should be greater at this location and that, and that some of the feedback, um, was concerns over privacy and shadowing impact on neighboring properties. Finally, respondents were concerned that the proposal wouldn't provide enough, uh, outdoor space. Based on the public feedback and petition received, this proposal meets the heightened density as set out within the Canby corridor plan. Through the plan, the delivery of rental housing is anticipated elsewhere through the development of unique and large sites. Examples include the Ashley Mar Co-op, Pearson Dogwood, the Oakridge Transit Centre site, Oakridge Mall, and sites located in proximity to transit stations. In regards to the tenants, all existing rental tenancies will receive tenant compensation through the TRP policy. In addition, the Canby corridor plan allows applicants to pursue strata or rental housing as its tenure. And townhouses and row houses do provide ground-oriented family housing, as well as home ownership opportunities. Finally, sufficient outdoor space will be provided through the R M eight A and A N design guidelines, which include guidelines on setbacks, patio spaces and landscaping. The density bonus zoning and public benefit DBZ policy is applied at fifty-five dollars and twenty cents per square foot to the increase in density from zero point seven five to one point two F S R. The density, uh, DBZ contribution will provide roughly one and a half million dollars in public benefits towards the Canby corridor public benefits strategy. With the addition of the citywide and utilities D C L, this application will provide roughly two million dollars in public benefits overall. To conclude, this proposal aligns with the Canby corridor plan and would join one of approximately fifty-five townhouse projects that have been approved since the plan's adoption in twenty eighteen. Staff recommend approval of this application along with the conditions of approval outlined in appendix B of the referral report. Staff and the applicant team are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, we're, um, gonna see if the applicant teams here, and if you'd like to speak to this application or just answer questions.
Hi there, can everybody hear me okay?
Sure can.
Hello, uh, Mayor and council, my name is Michael Biarck and I'm with Robner, um, and on behalf of Citymark, pleased to have Mayor and council consider a set of townhome proposals.
You're, 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 uh, cutting in and out a little bit.
Oh, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I think just speaking directly in the mic will be helpful.
Sure, okay. I'll, I'll try to see. Uh, I was just saying. And, um, we're pleased to have Mayor and council consider a set unit townhome proposal, which fully conforms with the Canby plan. It will provide much-needed ground-oriented housing supply that is also appropriate for families. As noted in the staff presentation, we cater to existing tenants on site and are providing assistance package that exceeds the base requirements.
Yeah, we're still having.
I'm still missing some of the audio.
Uh, we're still having trouble hearing you. I don't know if you're on a cell phone or landline or, uh, but, um, is there any way that you can, um, perhaps adjust your audio settings?
Can you, is this, is this better?
Uh, we can try it and just keep going and we'll see if we can, uh, if there's trouble, we'll let you know.
I'm just, I'm just adjusting my microphone here. Can you, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, as I was saying, um, as noted in the staff presentation, we engage with existing tenants on the site and are providing an assistance package that exceeds the base requirements of the city's tenant relocation and protection plan. Um, in addition to myself, we also have our tenant relocation specialists, Kelly Lawson and Shauna C. Loopner, L P A present, as well as my, my colleagues Rebecca Nguyen and Dwayne Seagress from Citymark Properties, are happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. And that, uh, audio was a lot better, uh, that time around. Uh, okay, council, this is your chance to ask questions, uh, to staff or the applicant. And sorry, I'm just gonna pull up my screen here. One second. There we go. Uh, councillor Kerry Young, up to five minutes, please.
Yeah, quick clarification, because I, I couldn't hear all the audio. Did I hear you say seven units? Were you talking, did you refer to the number of units? I couldn't hear you.
Sorry, it was, I apologize for the microphone. Seventy units, seventy.
Seven zero. You're still cutting out for me, so seventy is correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and, um, okay, and are you, and you're doing this as strata?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Um, is there anything else that is distinct or unique about this development from a perspective or? No, I mean, no sort of common area strata ownership, sort of standard townhouse type of typology, is that right?
Uh, yes, there is a, yes, it is, it is, it's most of the RM eight A N guidelines from the site.
Sorry. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I got a note from my computer saying I lost the connection. Um, okay, good, if you can still hear me, do we still have the applicant?
Yep.
Yes, still here.
Okay, sorry, you said it confirmed the RM eight, eight guidelines. I, I understand, uh, confirms the guidelines. My question is, is there anything different or unique about this, or is it a sort of standard townhouse typology? That was my question.
I mean, it is a standard townhome typology. Some form of central amenity, but that would be, uh, central landscape.
Yeah, we are still having a, a really hard time hearing you. It just keep, you, you're, you come in for a bit and then you fade right out. We can kind of get every second sentence.
A point of procedure, Mayor.
Uh, hello, Mayor and council.
Can you pause my time here?
Back to Newham from Citymark. I'm just gonna step in here while Mike's adjusting his mic. I can help answer questions.
Can, yeah, can you pause my, my time there for me?
Go ahead, councillor Kirby.
Just a point of procedure, Mayor Stewart. It's councillor Dejanova.
Yes, councillor Dejanova.
I was just wondering if maybe it would be helpful to have a short recess to allow the applicant to come back on.
Well, we'll just, we'll just keep going along. Uh, go ahead, councillor Kirby.
Yeah, I, I can't, I lost last choice. I can't understand what he said. He said they're trying to have some type of, sounded like central something.
Right, uh, you asked about amenities and perhaps the other, uh, speaker can fill us in?
Yes, so we do have a central amenity space, uh, in our application. Um, and also providing a secondary pedestrian link on our southern side.
A secondary pedestrian link on your which side?
On our southerly side. We'll have a secondary pedestrian, uh, right away for the city.
Okay, I'm gonna leave it there because I'm having difficulty, um, catching it, so it's not, it's not a useful exercise. Thank you.
Councillor Swanson, up to five.
Yeah, um, so let me get this straight. There's, you're planning to do seventy units. Uh, there is fourteen tenants there now that are eligible for the TRP. And you're not, uh, going to give them the right of first refusal to return at twenty percent below market, is that correct?
That's the applicant.
Yeah, to the applicant.
Into having, uh, people from the tenants group, uh, in our early access to the sales program, but not at that, uh, rate that you state.
You're cutting out, sorry. I couldn't get what you said.
I think, um, if you can hear me, it's, this is a, this is a strata.
Mayor, can I move, can I move for a recess? Like, council can't hear the applicant. I don't think that this is.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a problem with the applicant's, uh, connection, their internet connection.
I'd like to second that, Mayor.
Yeah.
Give them an opportunity to reconnect if possible.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess and just ask the applicants to, uh, perhaps call in. That might be better. Um, so we'll take five minutes at seven oh six. We'll come back at seven eleven.
Thank you.
I don't think we should.
Yeah, just to repeat, I guess. So you're, to the applicant, you're planning on building seventy condo units. Twenty percent of that just happens to be fourteen, which is the number of tenants eligible for the TRP who are being evicted. And you are saying that you're, you're not going to, you'll pay them to leave according to the TRP, but you won't be able to, you won't be providing them with any affordable housing, is that correct?
Yeah, there's no affordable housing proposed on this development.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dejanova, up to five minutes.
Thanks, just to clarify and, and follow up. And, and I'll ask staff some of these questions too, but I'm just wondering if maybe the applicant could, could share whether or not the, these are strata titled units, because under the policy, policies that apply, this was what was able to work in your performa considering we currently have rental on the site, but you'd be looking to move to strata?
Um, yeah.
Yes, it's for the applicant, as I noted, sorry.
Yeah, just want to make sure everyone can hear me, is that correct?
Yes, can.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Yeah, so, you know, we can't provide rental on the site due to the limitations of density allowed on the site. At one point two FSR for, that is gonna make it unfeasible for us to do rental. We think strata townhomes are an important part of the missing middle that need to be addressed in the city as well. And there is a lack of supply in ground oriented housing still. And it is our understanding in the Canby corridor, there is gonna be potential rental housing in the pipeline, especially within one kilometer of our site, including places of unique sites such as the JCC, OTC, Heatherlands, Oakridge Centre. And we learned more recently that the Sean Oak site, which is directly south of us, is also gonna be making an inquiry application soon. And they will also be providing portions for rental and social housing. So altogether, our understanding is that, you know, there's gonna be fifteen hundred rental homes and over a thousand social housing homes within one kilometer of the site in the Canby corridor.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify on my earlier question, so the current policy that you have to follow, the guidelines that you have to follow, have, have not made it possible for you to put the density on the site that you would need to. And that's why you've chosen strata over rental, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And there's a different tenant relocation policy in right of refusal when we come back with strata, just to address a question that was asked by my colleague. It's not first right of refusal, yes, thank you. I can ask our staff that too. I just wanted to make sure that was the applicant's understanding. Also wanted to ask the applicant, sorry to put you on the spot, I'm just looking back, the referral report and policy reports here, but what is the increase to family units in, in the density that you'll be increasing currently on the site in rental versus what we'd be seeing? I understand there are two and three bedroom units proposed for the site.
Yeah, we currently have a high proportion of our unit mix with three bedrooms over approximately seventy percent will be three bedrooms provided in this townhouse development. I think our requirement under the city policy is only about ten percent. We'll have another twenty percent in two bedrooms. All oriented for family housing. Right now, we have duplex homes with various states of rental in them with approximately eighteen tenants.
So this is substantial in increasing the amount of family housing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and, and just another question is, do you know what this will do to the current inventory? I mean, if we looked at today, obviously, we're not looking at if, if this were to pass, it being finished or completed tomorrow. But the current inventory of townhomes on the market for sale in Vancouver, I understand that there is scarce inventory. Do, do you expect that this would be greatly needed or add to inventory in the city?
Yes, yeah, we, we are, we, we do find that three bedroom townhouses are in high demand. They, they are, they're certainly needed in the city and other municipalities in the lower mainland.
Thanks to the applicant. Just a very quick question to staff. I might have more questions later through points of information. But could staff comment on whether or not this would add a significant increase to the stock and supply of townhomes, family sized townhomes in Vancouver?
Just thirty seconds.
Really, yes or no?
Thank you for your question, Counselor. We do have housing staff on the line who may be able to speak directly to that question.
Twenty seconds, so. Will it increase the stock townhouses?
Yes, hello, can you hear me? This is Alexandra from Housing.
Yes.
Hi, I don't have exact numbers, but yes, this, this proposed development will increase the stock of three bedroom townhouses in the area.
Great, thank you. That's all from me, Mayor.
Great, Counselor Swanson, do you have anything else? Are you on mute, baby? Counselor Swanson?
Sorry, the applicant said that there's about a thousand units in the immediate area of social housing coming on stream. Can staff confirm whether or not that's true?
Hi, Counselor Swanson, this is Teen here, Senior Rezoning Planner. I don't know if I heard a thousand units of social housing, but we definitely did hear that there is a large supply and anticipated need for rental housing delivered on large sites. But what we can tell you is further down, further south in the Canby corridor, there's social housing being delivered in the Ashley Mar redevelopment that council just approved. And we can expect some in the Oakridge redevelopment, which is coming to council in the next item. So, so definitely, social housing, I'm not sure about a thousand units, but definitely the need and anticipated demand and filling that demand for rental housing in the area, for sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Counselor Swanson, and that's it for questions. So we're going to move to the public speakers list now. Let's see, we've got, first we have Nathan Davidovich. Speaker number one, Nathan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Yesterday, the BC legislator, they had a motion that the House urged the government to take meaningful action to address the housing, the record housing and rental costs in British Columbia. And one of the answers by one of the MLAs, they, they, they said that housing has no political stripes. Whatever you are, conservative, a liberal, a green, or an NDPer, you have no political or no political affiliation. Everybody needs housing. We know that this is one of the fundamental human rights issues, as well the right to housing. Well, Vision Council was the old council before you. And they have to be blamed for the bad Canby corridor plan of twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. However, this city council has no obligation to approve anything that former councils approved. The coming corridor plan is not even a bylaw, like in other cities where they have official community plan enacted as a bylaw. And therefore, it is very easy to change. You know, last month, city council approved the motion by the mayor of pilot project on two thousand lots of six housing units per lot. Well, we already have six units per lot on Oak Street. There are existing seven duplexes. They're all designed to provide six units. And the existing twenty five units could be forty two units of affordable rental housing. There's also forty two parking spaces. So there is no shortage of parking. These houses were built in around nineteen sixty five and their lifespan can be extended by twenty to thirty years at a very little cost. Oak Street has already over a hundred apartment buildings up and down Oak Street. There is no reason why we can't have more apartments. BC Housing can buy this site from the developer the same way as they've built, bought the site on Grandview Highway in Vancouver, on Marine Drive, on, in Burnaby and other places. And they can build lots of affordable housing units. I sent you various news reports of similar housing projects and they are posted by the city clerk on the website. And there is also a good analysis by Owen Brady under other comments. You know, and many affordable housing projects seem to be constructed under the P three, three partnership, which is bad. You know, and, and we need full time housing minister like we had in nineteen seventy two. Lo Nickelson was the first housing minister in Canada. All of city council voted for the pilot on the two thousand lots and all of you should vote against this project and work on providing affordable rental housing on this site. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You do have questions. Counselor Swanson first, up to five minutes.
Yeah, Nathan, you're one of the people that's being evicted, right?
Yes. Me and my.
Do you have a place to go to?
Not yet.
Are there other people that are upset about being evicted?
Oh, yeah, we, you know, we all had about three different demonstrations at Thirty Seventh and Oak to bring the matter to light and, you know, the provincial government unfortunately does not have a Minister of Housing, and that's the problem. BC Housing is a crown corporation acting like a private developer and they pick and choose what project they want instead of just buying all the properties that are available on all the arterial streets in Vancouver and putting them what city council wants, which is a six story rental apartment buildings on all arterials. So you should ask them to, to buy.
Okay, thank you.
Just to remind councilors, let's try to, and, and speakers, let's just try to, we are evaluating this this single project. I do understand that it's attached to policy, but let's try to just keep it within, in the boundaries of the discussion. Counselor Harwick, over to you, five minutes.
Thank you very much. Nathan, city council, how do you think city council is in a position to get BC Housing to buy this property?
Well, I mean, you can ask the government to, to do that. The city has money through to the MT home tax that you have collected for years. And, you know, I'm sure if you.
Sorry to interrupt you, but you got quite a lot of media coverage on this, did you not? You, you, did you hear at all, or do you know anyone that heard from BC Hydro, or BC Hydro, BC Housing, based on all of the exposure that this particular instance received?
No, I never heard from BC Housing, no.
Let me shift my questions. I know that you're a transportation aficionado. Do you see implications on, on, with traffic problems in Okan Thirty Seventh area as a result and proximity to Vandusen Gardens?
Yes, and I've written to the Parks Board and here we are again, you know. The general manager of the Parks Board does not send any information to city council to tell them about the problems of traffic. They have to call the police department to direct the traffic because there's no left turn bays on Oak Street to get into Vandusen. And, I mean, the traffic signal there at Thirty Seventh and Oak, I asked four years ago to change it to a regular traffic signal from pedestrian to cyclist. And the, the, the city engineer said, I don't have money. Well, why don't you get it from developers? The, the school board is putting a new school there, Eric Hambler, the Heatherlands, Oakridge. There is lots of money that's being paid to the city and, and the city engineer can't get that money to upgrade the traffic signal, upgrade the safety. There's hundreds of accidents along Oak Street. I called ICBC Traffic Safety Manager and he was appalled that the city is not asking for help from, from ICBC. They have a program to help cities to, to get into vision zero to reduce the number of accidents. You know, Oak Street has over three thousand cars per hour in the, in the rush hour, in one hour. And, you know, it's, it's a very bad traffic situation. And, you know, we have thousands of workers who work at the hospitals and, and they need housing and they need proper transit as well. We don't have twenty four seven bus service on Oak Street like they do on Granville Street. And so there is a whole bunch of problems that should be investigated with the school board and Parks Board. And they should help the city to, to, to solve the traffic problems on Oak Street.
So what you're saying, if I'm just extrapolating from that, is that the, the complexities around mobility with the added density in this area, not just the Canby corridor, but we're over in Oak Street in this case, with Little Mountain and all the other density coming on stream, needs to be, we need to be looking at the forest, not just the trees.
Oh, yeah, I mean, this is a whole corridor of Oak Street, all the way from Sixth Avenue to Marine Drive. Talking about thousands, I mean, this is the busiest corridor on the west side of the city. And, and there's hardly anything being done. You know, as I said, ICBC was, was amazed that the city never applied for any of the grants that are eligible to apply.
Well, thank you very much for answering my questions, Nathan.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. That's it for questions. Appreciate you coming in this evening, and I'm going to move to the next speaker, who is Kenneth Ing. Speaker number two, Kenneth Ing.
Yeah. Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. As mentioned, my name is Ken Ing, and thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of this application. I'm going to come in with a slightly different perspective. I'm a long-term resident in the city of Vancouver, actually since 1971. I live in Carisdale, which is very close, about three kilometers from the subject site. And I drive by Vandusen Garden often, not just for the festival of lights, but was very glad to see the rezoning sign for the project to provide townhouses for this area. I walked around the site quite extensively, and in my opinion, there's a lot of demand for this type of housing. For myself, I've lived in Carisdale since 1988, and, excuse me, I'm about to retire, and my wife and I are empty nesters, planning to downsize. I like to stay on the west side, and the subject location is ideal in my mind. It's on a major artery, close to the hospital downtown in Richmond, and the airport. And my wife and I like the inclusion of the ground-level townhouses. I see that there's a small yard, and the maintenance would be much lower compared to our single-family house. We don't know the exact pricing, but the cost would be, I would imagine, significantly lower than a house in the Carisdale area. Now, as I retire, and savings are hard to come by, the savings would be most welcome. And I guess I'm coming from the perspective of an empty nester. I would imagine that there'd be many other empty nesters like my wife and me who would embrace this project. My kids are grown up now, but my, I was thinking for young families, this would be affordable housing, and there are many good schools nearby for these families. So I'm not just speaking from my own perspective and that of my wife and me, but also for younger families. And in closing, my wife and I would be pleased to see the proposed project approved. And I thank council and the mayor for your time.
Thank you so much for your input this evening. I don't see any questions for you from councilors, so I am going to move to the next speaker, who's Jonathan Sun, speaker number three.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
Yeah. Hi, my name's Jonathan Sun, I'm a Vancouver resident, and I want to speak out in support for this project as well. I as well grew up in the Carisdale area since the early 90s. My parents owned businesses in Carisdale in the 80s, and I've been just coming up to Carisdale since I was a little child. And then after finishing university, I actually opened up a business in Carisdale as well in 2015. I think this project's exactly what we've been looking for. I think that previous speakers speaking about empty nesters, I mean, that's exactly where my parents are right now, and if you want to stay in the area. I think this site gives a really unique opportunity for my parents and my young family to be able to live together in the neighborhood I grew up in. The location's going to provide excellent school catchments for my children, and the bus route on the main arterial provides really good accessibility for my elderly parents. So my mother is, has got a physical disability with rheumatoid arthritis, where walking up and down stairs is very difficult for her. So the prospect of having ground-floor, single-level unit for her to live in, where my young family can live upstairs, or, you know, in the townhouse portion of it, is valuable, that I can, I can kind of be with my parents. So it's just, in closing, I just think this is the right mix of housing that is connected to the need that incomes a family like myself. Yeah, I just, I just feel like this is exactly what we need in a neighborhood, I mean, for myself, we get to stick together in the, in the west side, and serve the needs of my children, and, yeah. Excellent. Thank you for, thank you, Mayor and council for your time.
Thank you so much for your input. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move to the next speaker, who is Tracy Beshara, speaker number four. Hi there. You have up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Oh, hi there. Hi, good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Chrissy, and I live a few blocks away from this Oak and 37th site, in multifamily housing, actually. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the townhouse proposal at Oak and 37th. For me, this neighborhood is a great area to live in. It's very desirable for many families due to the parks, amenities, and great schools. Unfortunately, a lot of these families can no longer afford to live here and purchase a single-family home, myself included. This project will provide a more attainable, family-oriented housing typology for families and individuals who want to live in the area. And for these reasons, I encourage mayor and council to approve the project. And just as a side note, I actually take Oak Street every single day for work for probably the last five years, and I really don't find it a problem at all to go from basically the Oakridge area towards downtown. You know, the light festival is a bit of an issue, but, but that's a really short, it's usually only three or four days that it's really crowded, and outside of that, it's really fine. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't see, I hope Counselor DeGenova has questions for you. Go ahead, Counselor DeGenova.
Thanks very much. Considering this council has made commitments, and the previous council before it, to missing middle housing, and last I checked, there was a scarce number of townhomes on the market in Vancouver. I'm wondering if you feel that the way to increase that stock is by adding supply?
Oh, of course. I mean, absolutely. I mean, it's just crazy out there. Everybody's looking, and, and it, I mean, it's great to have rental, but everybody, if there's, you know, a lot of people have a fortunate situation where they get maybe a small down payment, or they saved really hard, and if you can afford to buy and enter into the market so that you could pay yourself, and maybe that's your retirement at the end of the day, I think, you know, that's really great. So it's important to have that, that smaller typology that can allow people who, who, I mean, you still need a lot of money, but a little less money, to be able to get into the market.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I was going to ask if you had, you had mentioned that, you know, you feel that you're being outpriced, or I should say, from the market. Do you feel that we will, you know, this is a piece of the puzzle, but we need to move forward with more supply of this type of housing before we will see the, I suppose, this type of housing become more affordable?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, a, a single-family house in that area can range from $3 to $5 million, while a townhome could be, you know, around the million-dollar range. I mean, that's, you're cutting the, the housing price into a quarter for a family.
Thanks for sharing your perspective. I appreciate it.
My estimation, so, yeah, fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carr, up to five minutes for questions.
Yeah, thanks very much, and thanks for joining us. I really appreciate you speaking. I just want to do a quick correction. Did I hear you say that you actually do live in this area?
I do. I live on 41st and Willow.
Yeah, great. We just have it marked incorrectly in the information sheets that we get on our speakers, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody, yeah, thank you for that. Secondly, it does say that you're the executive director of the Marple Oakridge Family Place Society?
Counselor Carr, I think we, we've, this is speaker number five, Christine.
I was about to ask you that because my last name wasn't correct, and I didn't, but then for some reason, my speaker was on, so I, I think we've got, yeah, I think we, I am speaker five.
I'll go back to check for speaker four, we just said that.
I think we're both named Chrissy.
Got it. I, sorry, thanks for that correction, Mayor. No, I'm fine. I did have a question for speaker four, so thanks so much for joining us. Really appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
You all too, as well.
Okay. Counselor Frye, questions for speaker five?
Yeah, thanks. And just kind of a question that was triggered by something you mentioned about traveling along Oak Street to downtown. Are you traveling by car or transit?
I travel by car, unfortunately.
Yeah, no, no problem. No, lots of people do. I'm just curious how you think this project could better kind of maybe take advantage of a, of a more car-like, transit-oriented development kind of approach?
I mean, I think just that perhaps having bus routes that are more frequent and easy to take would always be key. I, I think, I believe there's underground parking, that's also helpful because, you know, the streets can get a little bit, a little bit busier, but, yeah, I really don't find it too bad.
Sure. Okay. So the, the underground parking is, is an asset to you, basically, more than the transit access?
Too many cars on the street, but, yeah, again, increasing transit, so buses and, and rapid transit, of course, would encourage people to take the bus.
Sure. Okay. No, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That's it for questions. Thanks so much for calling in. Counselor, just so you're aware, speaker four withdrew from this item, wanted to speak to the next item. So with that, we're done, our registered speakers, and I'll make our first call for speakers that have not registered. Clerks, do you, is there anybody in the chambers or on the line for this item?
No speakers in the chamber or on the line, Mayor.
Thanks. Second call, 1-833-353-8610, code 39901 pound, and that number's on Twitter and on the live stream. Just going to check for the second time. Clerks, anybody, anybody there?
No speakers in the chamber or on the line, Mayor.
Okay, this is the third call. We're at 7:42. We'll come back at 7:47 to finish the site. See you in five minutes, council.
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Thanks. So we're going to close the speakers list, and since we've had little or no correspondence after 5:00 PM, we're going to close the receipt of public comments, and just ask the applicant if they have any closing comments.
Mayor and council, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. Want to thank you all for your time tonight, and reiterate that, you know, we are working with our tenants, particularly Nathan's sister, who is a tenant. And we are, our, our plan is to be alongside them every step of the way to go above and beyond the city's standard policies for the tenants. And we thank you again for your consideration for our townhouses, which we hope will provide the much-needed family housing in the city of Vancouver. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Staff have any closing comments?
Staff have no closing comments. Thank you.
Thanks. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff? Counselor DeGenova, up to five minutes.
I don't. I don't see anyone else on the queue, so I was prepared to move the motion unless...
Okay, thanks. Do we have a second or?
Counselor Kirby.
Thank you. We'll go to the main queue. Anybody want to speak to this issue at all? Counselor DeGenova, up to five, please.
I'll just speak very briefly to say that I appreciate all of the speakers who took the time to come and speak to council tonight at public hearing, both in person and via our virtual method. I do think that it is important, as we move forward, that while we balance affordability, and I think that it is unfortunate that we are losing rental in this, on this site, we also have to look at our policies. So I heard loud and clear from the applicant that our policies do not make it viable and a pro forma to build the density that they need to build, that that only comes with strata. That being said, aside from that, we don't see many, I haven't seen many rental townhomes come forward to council in my time, my second term. That being said, strata market townhomes do meet the need, needs of the missing middle. And there, the last time I checked, there were maybe a dozen townhomes, and this was just maybe a month ago, a dozen townhomes... And there, the last time I checked, there were maybe a dozen townhomes, and this was just maybe a month ago, but dozen townhomes listed in the city of Vancouver for sale. So I do think that there is, uh, value in adding more supply. And although we have to look at this project based on its merits, I also am hopeful as to what that will do for the supply of townhomes in our city, as we heard from a speaker. Um, although the price of a townhome in Vancouver is high, it can be a quarter what we would see, um, a single-family residential detached home being. For some families, townhomes certainly do offer a better option. And we've committed as a council this term, uh, in the previous term, I brought forward a motion, um, with a colleague on missing middle housing. Um, and I, I will continue, uh, to fight for and to support missing middle housing, just as I will across the housing spectrum for other types of housing, for people who are vulnerable, uh, for people who do need rental, for non, non-market housing or need housing, that there is a need for this type of housing in Vancouver. So for that reason, um, I will be supporting this and I hope that there will be support, uh, to increase the stock of townhomes in Vancouver, as we've heard from many, uh, as we've all said, we'd like to do at some point or another, um, as we move through this term. So I'll leave it there, Mayor Stewart, but thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we also next have, uh, councillor Swanson.
Yeah, I think that as a very minimum, we should be replacing the affordability that a new development destroys in that new development. And this one isn't doing that, so I can't vote for it for it.
Thank you.
That's my nine seconds.
Okay, councillor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I appreciate hearing from the speakers and, um, I, I will sort of preface my comments. Saying I know it's difficult if you're an existing renter, if, um, people are losing their home and I'm really sensitive to that. It is the job of council to look at whether an application coming forward is, uh, consistent and complies with the policy and this application does and debates about the policy. We often have this for, um, probably good repeating, there's repeating those folks are listening, council often identifies issues that they're concerned about during a public hearing, but the public hearing is not the forum to bring forward policy changes, council is. And we are supposed to evaluate applications based on whether or not they meet a policy and they, which is defined to fulfill a housing need. And I think that having townhomes really is a missing component. We always talk about housing being a continuum and needing a number of options along that continuum. And this checks a number of boxes for me. We heard from a couple of speakers that talked about downsizing, um, that their parents could, um, sort of age in place in their neighborhood, which is really important, um, when people at that point in life to keep the family and the neighborhood connections, um, and they would be able to do that. Also talked about the other end of the spectrum where young families could look at this choice where necessarily be able to put themselves into a single-family home, um, because that is out of reach for so many people in Vancouver. And so I think it is council's job to provide housing along the, the continuum, but when I think seventy lots is now going to be replaced with seventy townhomes, that means ten homes, um, whereas previously, you know, it might, you might've had one, for example, a single family. Notwithstanding whether or not you to duplex or not, but just looking at that in terms of just illustrating the ability to bring more homes in and also, um, the fact that their family in it's a multi-bedroom, which we also hear is a challenge in the city. Um, it's attractive form, three stories is not particularly high. This is on Oak Street, which is a busy street and an arterial. Um, and I did appreciate the comments from some of the comments that came in that were written as well that said, you know, this allowed me to enter into the market. I wouldn't have been able to otherwise. Uh, lots of apparently welcoming comments from folks like the executive director of the Jewish Community Centre and others, um, where people are looking forward to tap in and being part of this, um, community that has, um, a number of family benefits from parks to community centres and other things. So I think it's a good project for that reason. I think townhomes are needed for them. I don't think we have enough of them and I think they're snapped up as soon as we put them in the pipeline. Um, so I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Kirk.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, so it, it can be planned. This is, um, in our, our report states it's like the twenty eighteen plan. That's phase three of the plan. It, the Canby Corridor Plan actually started before I was first elected in, in, uh, twenty eleven. So it was twenty ten, phase one, and it was prompted by the investment in the Canada Line and the need to see densification along the transit corridor. If phase two was in twenty eleven, first year I was on council and, um, it was, there was major development on streets and I saw an incredible amount of speculation, uh, driving up prices. I think it was one lot that was a, um, trying to be in, uh, in an assembly that, that, uh, uh, there was a holdout on it and I think it went for over ten million dollars, one lot. I mean, it does increase speculation, land prices and thus housing prices, no doubt about that. Phase three, which is what this report is based on in terms of policy, is ground-oriented housing and we're seeing B R T zones turn into R A, um, R M A A N zones and sort of the, the kind of a pre-zoning. We've had a lot of them, um, over the course of the, of the three years that we have all been on council. Um, and it does, uh, fill a, uh, a gap, um, in terms of the, of the spectrum of housing needs. Do I think we need more affordable housing in the city? Yes. Absolutely. It's a crisis. Do I think we should be replacing the affordable housing that's in place equivalently with a certain affordable housing, um, when development occurs as, as councillor Swanson suggested? Yes. I, that's not the policy that's on the table right now, but I think it's, it's a, a, a policy that we should be, uh, considering in terms of, uh, ensuring we don't lose affordability as we develop new housing. This, uh, this proposal does comply, um, with the, with the policy. Therefore, I am going to support it. Um, it, it, in my mind though, doesn't mean we shouldn't be thinking about, um, in a broader way, the other kinds of policies we need to ensure this city, you know, retains affordability and actually increases affordability. Um, but our job is not to make policy changes, councillor Kirby Young pointed out, um, at the council table in a rezoning application. Our job is to make sure that the application that comes forward meets the policy that it is, uh, brought under. And I, this does. So that's why I support.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Hardwick.
Thanks for the question. Do wrongs make rights, repeating them? Um, I just struggle within what universe increasing land value, um, will make things more affordable for anyone. A rising tide does, after all, lift all boats. Uh, so land inflation will make it, it, you know, just unfeasible to be developing affordable housing. So I think we should just get that out of the way, uh, in our discussion. In this particular case, I just wonder if, uh, a one point with an F S R of one point two, if it, it could not, uh, have supported building rentals. We have seen rentals built at, at this F S R and other locations. Uh, but again, I, I think it's pretty clear that going back, uh, to roughly, it was back in two thousand nine, so preceding the Canby Corridor Plan, where the city changed its business model to regularize the revenue streams direct, uh, which is essentially what I call selling zoning, which is, is what we've seen repeated as a pattern. So to me, it's putting out fire with gasoline, uh, but here we are. We continue. And I will continue to express my resistance. Thank you.
Councillor Wade.
Yeah, I will be supportive. Um, I do think there's an opportunity to create better south, north, um, pedestrian public realm, um, recognizing connecting to Van Duzen and obviously the site to the south will be redeveloped. Um, I'm also concerned that we are seeing these properties valuation increase by almost fifty-fold in the assessed versus the purchase price and then as well, we're not being able to capture as much of the land lift to be able to deliver the amenities and we are amenity short here in the city of Vancouver. So I hope to look forward at opportunities for us to really be able to deliver the public amenities needed. Um, I'm hoping, um, the proponent here does as much as possible to create a good public realm, better north-south pedestrian, um, as well as along thirty-seventh, which is a really important bike route. So I hope there's opportunities to create a really good little community, uh, in this project, but I think we need to really revisit opportunities for us to deliver amenities and capture a little bit more of the valuation on projects like this, but I will be supportive.
Thank you. Uh, that's it for, uh, comments, uh, from council debate. So we'll move to the vote on this item. Councillors, uh, Boyle and Dominado. Councillor Boyle?
Mayor, I need a vote assist in favor. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. That has been recorded and this has passed with councillors Swanson and Hardwick in opposition. Okay, council, we're on to the last item of the evening, uh, which is item number four. And, um, just let me pull it up here. This is C D one text amendment on forty-first, West Forty-first Avenue. Uh, please declare conflict if you have one now. We'll get the clerk to read the application.
This is an application by Enrique Partners Architects to amend C D one district for six fifty West Forty-first Avenue. The proposed amendment would increase permitted floor area from four hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred point seven square meters to four hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight point nine square meters. Um, increase permitted for floor area. Oh, sorry, I said that. Increase the maximum floor space ratio from three point seven one to four point one and increase maximum building heights to allow the additional development of two hundred and eighty-three market rental units, a hundred and thirty moderate income rental units and additional office space. The general manager of planning, urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing. Twenty-four pieces of correspondence in support, seven pieces of correspondence in opposition, and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to seven P M. today.
Thanks so much. Okay, um, we do have a number of speakers to this. Uh, so we have Tiffany, uh, Rougeau, Rougeau, uh, from the Resounding Centre to, uh, walk us through a presentation.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Tiffany Rougeau and I'm the planner for this application to amend C D one one, six fifty West Forty-first Avenue to allow for the additional development of rental housing and office space on the site. This text amendment is being considered under the July twenty nineteen Issues Report on Intensification of Large Sites to Include Moderate Income Rental Housing. The subject site shown in red is twenty-eight acres in size and located at the southwest corner of Canby Street and Forty-first Avenue, immediately adjacent the Oakridge Forty-first Avenue Canada Line Station. The site is zone C D one one. The immediate area consists of high and medium density mixed-use buildings with residential, office and commercial uses. There are a number of active rezoning applications and recently approved rezonings under the Canby Corridor Plan in the vicinity, with developments ranging from fourteen to thirty-three stories. The site is centrally located close to a number of significant green spaces, including Columbia, Tisdale and Queen Elizabeth Parks. The site will also be connected to the Canada Line as part of the three development. The R four rapid bus along Forty-first Avenue provides access to U B C and Joyce Station. As noted on the map, there are nearby schools, childcare facilities and other amenities within walking distance. The site is located in the Oakridge local area in the centre of the Oakridge Municipal Town Centre, which the Canby Corridor Plan envisions as a vibrant hub of services and amenities with significant new affordable housing and job space for the city and region. The site was previously developed with approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet of retail and office space. Oakridge Centre houses the Oakridge branch of the Vancouver Public Library as well as the Oakridge Senior Centre. Currently, the site is under construction following current zoning and development permits. Oakridge Centre was the first rezoning in Vancouver and dates back to nineteen fifty-six. It was the first auto-oriented shopping centre in Vancouver. In two thousand and seven, council adopted the Oakridge Centre Policy Statement, which envisioned a mixed-use sustainable development of the site. The C D one bylaw has been amended several times over the years. Most significantly, the current vision for the site was approved by council following a public hearing in twenty fourteen. Council approved amendments to the C D one to enable substantial redevelopment of the site in accordance with the policy statement. The redevelopment would expand retail, service, office and civic uses and add more residential space. Public benefits secured through the twenty fourteen rezoning included two hundred and ninety units of social housing, two hundred and ninety secured market rental units, a nine-acre city park, a civic centre containing a new community centre, library, senior centre, performance spaces and a sixty-nine space childcare facility. Following the twenty fourteen rezoning, the project proceeded through a preliminary development permit process to refine the master plan. As the project has since progressed through development permits, a number of minor adjustments were made to the C D one bylaw with the latest amendment enacted in June twenty twenty. Currently on-site, construction is in progress for the first phase of the redevelopment. This text amendment is being considered under the policy framework of the Issues Report on Intensification of Large Sites to Include Moderate Income Rental Housing. In July twenty nineteen, council directed staff to consider additional height and density on major project sites like Oakridge Centre to support the addition of rental housing, including a twenty-five percent target on the new rental floor area for below-market rental units. The proposed below-market rental units are targeted for individuals with annual household incomes between thirty thousand and eighty thousand dollars. The addition of new below-market units to the city's inventory will contribute towards the housing Vancouver targets. The Employment Lands and Economy Review launched in twenty nineteen is also considered for this text amendment. In October twenty twenty, council approved the E L E R Phase Two Report, which identified emerging directions to help guide future planning and a series of quick start actions to intensify job space in key areas. This work included key forecasts for employment spaces across the city, taking into account the effects of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Through this work, Oakridge was identified as a key area for job space growth over the long term. In two thousand and seven, council adopted the Oakridge Centre Policy Statement, which envisioned a mixed-use sustainable redevelopment of the site with a greater intensity of housing, retail and office uses that takes advantage of the Oakridge Centre's excellent transit accessibility and adjacency to parks and public amenities. Within the Canby Corridor Plan, Oakridge Centre is designated as a major project site within the Oakridge M T C with its own planning process. The vision for the Oakridge M T C is to enable more diverse housing types to meet the housing and affordability needs of a diverse population, to provide job space, allowing people the opportunity to live and work within their neighbourhood and to provide a built form that reflects the regional importance of this location. There's a lot of history to this site, but the application before you tonight is a text amendment to deliver new rental housing and office space. The Oakridge Centre development includes fifteen buildings of varying heights. Changes proposed in this application affects nine buildings identified in yellow on the map. The remainder of the development, including the overall site plan approved in twenty fourteen, remains unchanged. An increase in floor area of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-three square feet, an increase in F S R from three point seven one to four point one, and heights up to ninety-seven feet are all proposed to accommodate this new rental housing and office space. Per the July twenty nineteen Issues Report, the application builds on the twenty fourteen rezoning by proposing an additional two hundred and sixty-six thousand thirty-one square feet of new market rental floor area and one hundred and eight thousand three hundred and forty-six square feet dedicated for below-market rental housing. This application would create an additional two hundred and eighty-three market rental unit and add a hundred and thirty below-market rental unit to the project. These units will be spread equally between buildings five and ten. These buildings are shown in red on the map. A question was raised from council about creating more affordable housing with this application. Staff worked with the applicant to maximize the potential for below-market units here. The minimum requirement is for twenty-five percent of the new rental floor area to be rented at below-market rates. This application exceeds this requirement as forty-nine percent of the net new rental floor area proposed is for below-market rental. If approved, the total site, including previously approved rental, would deliver five hundred and seventy-three market rental units and a hundred and thirty below-market rental units, all secured through housing agreements. This table compares the average below-market rent versus ownership options and market rents in new buildings. When compared to home ownership costs, market rents and in particular below-market rents, providing. provide a more affordable alternative to homeownership. In addition, rent increases for below-market units are permanently limited to the Provincial Residential Tenancy Act maximum, even after a change in tenancy. In addition to the new rental housing, the application also proposes three hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-six square feet of new office space in the Oak Ridge M T C. Office, shown in blue on the map, is distributed throughout the site. In addition to the Employment Lands and Economy Review work, the Oak Ridge Policy Statement contains a key planning principle to increase the amount of office space on the site to serve local and citywide needs. Oak Ridge Centre's central location on the Canada Line provides an opportunity to grow the city's stock of major employment hubs outside the downtown Peninsula, allowing people the opportunity to live and work within their neighborhood. In order to accommodate the new rental residential and office space, the project has reduced the previously approved retail and strata floor area. The following form of development is the result of adding rental and office. The most critical urban design considerations at Oak Ridge Centre remain optimizing access to daylight for the Central Park space, enhancing the emergent Canby Corridor skyline, achieving a high level of livability and establishing a sympathetic relationship with the evolving urban context. As the July twenty nineteen Issues Report allows for the consideration of additional density and height to support the addition of rental housing, the application proposes changes to form an expression beyond which was contemplated in the twenty fourteen rezoning and the Oak Ridge Design Guidelines. The six buildings highlighted in this map with green labels propose up to a three-story increase in height, with some as minor as a nine-foot increase. All buildings noted in this rezoning are proposed to increase in height in order to accommodate additional residential units and office floor area. This diagram shows the form of development from the previously approved design guidelines. These three buildings highlighted on the map propose a more significant departure from the design guidelines with regards to height. These are buildings five, seven, and fourteen. As we move to the next slide, you can see the increases in height for these three buildings. Building seven and fourteen propose height increases of six and eight stories respectively to accommodate the reallocation of previously approved strata residential floor area. Building fourteen also proposes an increase in its floor plate size from eight thousand to nine thousand square feet. Building five, being the highest proposed building on site, will include the majority of the rental housing units on site. It proposes a height increase of nine stories for a total height of fifty-two stories or seven hundred and sixty-nine feet. The floor plate is increased by seven hundred square feet for a total floor plate size of nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty square feet, generally matching the floor plate sizes of similarly significant towers on the downtown peninsula. Staff evaluated the overall changes in height, density, and tower floor plate size against the shadowing and urban design performance studies provided by the applicant and determined the resultant impact for minimum. And in consideration of an additional rental housing and office space, support the modifications proposed subject to design conditions in Appendix B. Building five in particular, as the tallest building on site, includes conditions in Appendix B for further design development to enhance the tower's expression. In keeping with the design guidelines, building five will be subject to a higher buildings' policy review at the time of development permit application, including an enhanced session with the Urban Design Panel. The applicant will be required to prepare revisions to the design guidelines reflecting the evolved architectural design proposed. A virtual open house was held from November second to the twenty-second in twenty twenty on the Shape Your City platform. Public input was received throughout the application process through online questions, comment forums, email, and by phone. Throughout the application process, staff received a total of forty-one comments or questions on the project. Overall feedback included support for the building height, density, and context, increased rental housing, building design, proximity to transit, and the addition of affordable housing units. Concerns included comments regarding the height and density, overall transit capacity issues, traffic congestion, lack of housing affordability, and a lack of community amenities. One hundred and thirty below-market rental units is the public benefit occurring from this application. These units will contribute to the city's secured rental housing stock serving a range of income levels. An additional forty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven square feet of social housing floor area is added in this application to better meet the city's housing design and technical guidelines, increasing the size of the previously approved social housing units. The reduction in the strata residential floor area and retail floor area fully offset the land value gains from the increased office space. And the addition of market rental floor area is fully offset by the below-market rental. It is due to the nature of these proposed changes that a C E C was not generated for the project. Noting that the additional residential and office do generate a need for childcare spaces, the applicant has offered a cash contribution of one million dollars to be allocated towards childcare in or around the Canby Corridor. The applicant will also be required to pay D C Ls and provide a public art contribution on the new floor area. In conclusion, this application complies with the July twenty nineteen Issues Report, Employment Lands and Economy Review work, the Oak Ridge Centre Policy Statement, and the Canby Corridor Plan. This text amendment proposes a significant addition of permanently secured below-market rental, market rental, and office space, which would contribute to the city's objectives and targets for affordable housing and complete communities with employment space. Staff conclude that the proposed form of development is an appropriate urban design response to the site and its context in the Oak Ridge Municipal Town Centre and recommend that the application be approved subject to the conditions in Appendix B. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff and the applicant team are available for any questions you may have.
Thanks very much for the presentation. Counsel, just to let you know, there's about eleven speakers signed up to speak to this item. But first, I'll ask if the applicant is here to speak to this application.
Yes, Gregory Enrique is here on behalf of the applicant. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Great. I have a very short presentation I want to share. Can I try and put it up now, please?
Sure, we'll get the clerks to do that for you.
See if I can do it here. Here, over on one. This one over here? I'm really bad at this, sorry. There we go. All right, can you see it, guys?
It's just coming up now. There we are. Yep, it is. It is up.
Great. Okay, well, Mayor and Council, thank you for, um, um, for hearing us tonight. I have my application's entitled The Evolution of Oak Ridge. And I'm just gonna read a very short statement and take you through a series of slides. It's been eight years. It has elapsed since our rezoning was approved by council and over eleven years since we first started designing the project. While we in the city and the community at large did our very best in the first rezoning to design for the future, much has changed in the world, and our project has evolved to respond to those changes and challenges. With a five-million-plus-square-foot project to be designed and constructed over a twenty-year period, the ability to adapt and change and respond to both the challenges and opportunities that present us is crucial. So what has changed since two thousand and fourteen? There, first off, there's been an exasperated housing crisis. Housing affordability has worsened since two thousand and fourteen, and city council policy has put an increased emphasis on rental and affordable housing. Our rezoning aims to address both housing supply and diversity challenges. Number two, a revolution in retail. COVID accelerated a shift towards online shopping that was already underway pre-pandemic, but barely on the radar in two fourteen, two thousand and fourteen. This has required an adjustment to our retail focus and resulted in a slight reduction in the overall retail area. Number three, the Canby Corridor Phase Three. With the designation of Oak Ridge Centre as a municipal town centre and the project and projected increases in the neighbourhood density due to the Canby Corridor Phase Three plan, we recognize the increasingly critical role that our site, Oak Ridge, plays, Oak Ridge Centre plays, and have increased workspace and housing to respond to the community's evolving needs. Number four, the pandemic. Completely unanticipated, COVID has caused a premature permanent closure of the entire mall, putting significant financial pressures on our project and increasing the overall risk to our clients. This further contributed to our decision to diversify both commercial and housing components of the project. What are the changes we're proposing? Staff did a wonderful job in presenting the changes. The rezoning proposes incremental additions to buildings already defined in our original two thousand and eighteen P D P. These changes are consistent with all of the urban design guidelines that were established while significantly improving housing affordability, services, job space, and delivering more public amenities in Phase One, including the majority of the public park. We have provided a much greater housing diversity when we compare the initial two thousand and fourteen rezoning mix with our proposed rezoning mix today. As one can see, our original rezoning mix had ten percent social housing and ten percent market rental, while our new proposed zoning mix includes seventeen percent market rental and a thirteen percent social and affordable housing. Providing a much-needed workspace, additional workspace is being added to address the need for more job space and local services to support the densification of the Canby Corridor and the broader west side. Buildings six, ten, and the north office tower are proposed to contribute an additional three hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-six square feet of workspace for a total of over eight hundred and ten thousand square feet. And we also want to take a step back and talk about what Oak Ridge Centre does to serve Vancouver. The total public benefits delivered by the site include a nine-acre city-owned park, two hundred and ninety units of social homes, social housing homes, and a hundred and three thousand square foot civic centre, which includes a civic community centre, library, a sixty-nine-spot daycare, plus a million-dollar contribution for daycare outside the site, a performance space, which is a large theatre, and a fifty-five-plus centre for seniors like myself, because I'm now approaching sixty. As well, this proposal adds an additional three thousand, three hundred and eighty-six thousand square feet of job space, two hundred and sixty-six thousand square feet of rental housing, which converts into two hundred and eighty-three homes, and a hundred and eight, a hundred and eight thousand square feet of more affordable housing, another additional hundred and thirty homes. We also have a very serious groundwater management system benefiting the broader neighbourhood and a district energy plant reducing carbon emissions by over seventy percent. How does Oak Ridge serve Vancouver? To summarize, the total direct public benefits exceed five hundred and fifty million dollars, which includes a three hundred and fifty-five million dollar C A C in total, a hundred and twelve million dollars in D C L revenues, and over seventy-five million dollars in off-site upgrades, utility infrastructure, and street improvements that support the Canby Corridor growth. There will also be five hundred and five, five thousand, three hundred and twenty permanent onsite jobs, retail, office, park, and onsite community centre. In closing, I just want to begin by thanking city staff for their leadership and the community at large for their input and participation over their many years of public process. And note that my client, Riannon Mobberley, is here and the consultant team to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. With that all in perspective, and now I'm going to ask the council if they have any questions for the staff or applicant on this. See any questions? Okay, so we can turn to hearing from the public. Oh, Counselor, we've got you on there.
Yeah, just a quick question. What was the calculation utilized for the one million dollars towards daycare?
Is that the staff or the applicant?
That's the applicant.
Okay.
I'm assuming the applicant put forward the one million C A C, or is that? Because that's what it sounded like from the presentation. So recognizing the need in almost five hundred thousand new square foot and the need for daycare in that area, one million doesn't seem to be suffice. So I'm just wondering where that number came from.
Riannon, are you here to answer that question, or should I jump in?
Oh, I can answer, Gregory. Dean Duke with West Bank. The, the analysis on the C A C for the project resulted, I think staff kind of summarized it. It didn't produce.
You're, you're very muffled. We're having a hard time hearing you.
Is this better?
A little bit.
Okay, um, the C A C analysis, which we undertook with city staff and Real Estate Services, established that there was no C A C generated by this rezoning through the pro forma analysis. And so the million dollars was, was an offering made by the applicant to address and recognize the fact that the, the Canby, this part of town and the Oak Ridge node would probably require more daycare as it builds out. But that, some of that daycare may need to be provided on other sites as they develop along Forty First and on Canby. So we made a million-dollar voluntary contribution. That's sort of in addition to anything that was established in the pro forma analysis.
Okay, and in the pro forma analysis, can you outline what was the in-kind that the hundred and thirty affordable homes are? And can you talk a little bit further about what type of affordability we'd see in those homes?
They are at, um, the hundred and thirty homes are at, one moment. At eighty percent of average market rents, so it's equivalent to the level of affordability that the city has been looking for in a moderate-income rental projects.
So these would be M R P, so these would be, are these rent-controlled units? And what was the in-kind utilized in the C A C pro forma evaluation? So what was the in-kind value that was tied to these and then?
So I'm not sure I fully understand the question in terms of.
So in the pro forma to calculate the C A Cs, there was obviously a determination of the in-kind value of this affordable housing. I'm just wondering, can you let us know what that in-kind value of affordable housing units are, and are they rent-controlled?
The units are rent-controlled. They'll be subject to a housing agreement and like entirely consistent with, um, with the housing agreements that are utilized on other moderate-income rental projects, other M R P projects.
And what was the evaluation used?
Yeah, it, it, I'm not prepared to answer that right now. It was, it was like about a, about a nine-month process with Real Estate Services going back and forth. We had Ernst &amp; Young was brought in to do an independent analysis of the entire rezoning, which included consideration of the reduction in strata residential density, the inclusion of new market rental density, and, and then ultimately, an offering of a number of units of, um, of moderate-income rental, uh, modern income rental units. Our initial offering on the moderate-income rental units was somewhat less than the hundred and thirty. I think we were at about ninety or ninety-five units. And as a result of back and forth with staff and Real Estate Services, we ended up increasing our offering to the hundred and thirty, which at the end of the day was considerably more than the, the policy statement that, that we were aiming to be in compliance with would have required.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hardwick. Up to five minutes. Questions to staff or the applicant?
To staff. My understanding is that the affordable or social housing under our definition should comprise twenty percent of the developments outlined in the city's policy for this type of housing within a large project. And, and yet, what we're looking at is really only thirteen percent are affordable under our definitions. How do you reconcile the difference between twenty percent and thirteen percent?
Staff?
Hi, Counselor Hardwick. It's Tiffany Rojo, rezoning planner here. I just want to clarify that on the net new rental floor area, the applicant, the application is delivering forty-nine percent of those at the moderate-income housing rental rate. As required by the July twenty nineteen Issues Report, because they had a twenty-five percent minimum requirement.
That doesn't make sense. There's four hundred and twenty units, a hundred and thirty of which are affordable rentals. That is thirteen percent.
May I add something to answer this? It's Gregory. You're just talking.
Yep.
Okay, because traditionally on these large sites, the housing component usually deals. Okay, because uh traditionally on these large sites, the housing component uh usually deals with mo- all most or all of the C A C component. Whereas on ours, we have other components to the offering of the C A C, which includes the nine acre own park. Includes a hundred and three thousand square foot civic center, the community center, daycare, library, things above and beyond what are traditionally done. In that ratio of twenty percent. And so the entire C A C, that's why we did our presentation, try and and uh elu- elucidate the broader offering.
Okay, so that's your rationale is that, you know, put aside the twenty percent where we're offsetting it with other amenities. So we're taking that away from the social housing um allocation.
That was the request of the city back in two thousand and fourteen. That was an ask from the city, sit the city.
Well, I I again, I I remember this right back to the very beginning and have watched it it um roll out, but. That's really at the heart of of my question there, and I know what the a- answer is. Um on in terms of the towers, building five is still a concern. I had a look at some of the ru- the uh questions that came in from the from the residents association. Uh could you uh address building five in particular and uh? The city's policy to allow for such significant increases in density for rental units in that case? Building five.
That's to the applicant? Councillor Hardwick?
That's to your staff.
Uh okay, well, either or. Um I'm imagining that staff are the ones that would have been listening to the residents and and read. All of council received the the letter from the residents association, and this was one of the items.
So to staff about five towers.
About building five.
Yeah, okay, staff?
Pardon me councillor Hardwick, could you reframe the question just to make sure that we get you the answer?
We heard from the residents, from your consultations, that building five remains a concern. Uh as the city's policy to allow for such significant increases in density for rental units. So I'm presuming that that we have uh and again, council all received the same email that I'm quoting from here that that listed the issues for the residents association. And uh building five was one of them. So that's. My question back to you. Have you, are you addressing the concerns? That's one of them. Another one is uh that oh that's on page three under towers. There's also page six under shadowing was another concern.
So questions about the five towers and shadowing to staff?
Yes councillor, we have Kevin Spans here from Urban Design.
Thank you councillor Hardwick. Uh that's an excellent question and um one of the reasons why we prepared a number of design development. Uh conditions for building five is because of the significant increase in height commensurate with. The provision of additional floor area for rental housing. Um and that is in response to what we're hearing from the community. Uh this building would be uh one of the tallest buildings in the city uh at this uh at this juncture and uh. We take that very seriously and it's one of the reasons why we've uh pushed for some additional design development to. Uh make the building fit a little bit more with the expectations of what we anticipated to see. Uh now in terms of an enabling policy uh that would permit us to consider additional height at the site, I I'll have to defer to a colleague of mine from uh housing. Um to answer that, but I can confirm that in terms of urban design architectural response. We're uh we're 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 very mindful of the potentially impacts of significant height increases here.
We are at the five minutes, so I am going to move on to councillor Swanson. Thank you councillor Swanson. Up to five, please.
Um yeah, for the proponent. Um are you anticipating? Uh getting any senior government financing for the rental housing?
Uh applicant?
Thank you.
Her clerk should answer that one.
Hi councillor Swanson, thanks for the question. It's Ian Duke with West Bank. Uh we haven't determined at this point in time whether we will seek. Uh senior government financing for the rental building. That's a decision that will be made uh in the future when we're closer to proceeding with that with that building in that phase.
Um so if you did get senior government funding, would you increase the affordability?
Uh if 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 the terms of that financing uh permitted and then we I I am. Certainly familiar with and and we have other projects where that's been the case. Um it really depends on the terms of that financing at the time, but um. Uh it's possible, for example, that with C M H C, uh C M H C could look at at um. At the building that they're being asked to finance and 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 if they had if they requested additional. Levels of of affordability or or adding to the number of affordable affordable units. Well, that's something we'd consider at that time.
Yeah, we're we're having a hard time hearing you still. If you could speak directly into your microphone, please.
Sorry about that. I I I'm just saying that we would. Need to make that decision at that time um based on the the terms of the financing that were being explored. Uh but certainly we'd be open to that and and that's something we've done in the past.
Okay, thanks.
Councillor Currie, I'm up to five.
Yeah, thanks. Following up on some of the questions from my fellow councillors with respect to the additional height. Uh for buildings, conceivably, if you weren't providing some of the broader community style amenities like the nine acre park, you could have. Smaller or taller buildings spread throughout the site. Could you not? And but you wouldn't have the park space. You wouldn't have this sort of creation of um. Kind of a project that's built around creating a bit more of a. Community with the community center, the park and the amenities. Is that a fair statement?
I believe so.
Okay, and with respect to the question around sort of. You know, paraphrasing a bit here, but with respect to maximizing the delivery of housing and looking at the overall sort of. Um community benefits package, if you will, and saying that that was perhaps outside of what would traditionally be required for. Um either inclusion of affordability or um below market rental or whatever the case is. And who drove that that vision um broadly for the site in terms of having these large amenities and creating a sort of. A more community type living space. Um was that a vision that came from the applicant? Was that something that partially came forward from staff? Do you want to speak about how that evolved as opposed to just focusing on delivering housing?
Um I I that was part of a large community process that um that over many years with both staff and the community. Um and the applicant ourselves, all working together to come up with an amenity package that addressed a whole bunch of. Uh serious needs that the Oakridge required.
Okay, and with the proponents, I know we have to limit our questions to this specific project, but obviously the proponent has a pretty significant amount of experience in doing projects like this. Do you find that people are looking for homes certainly and they're looking and the tenure type's important, the affordability's important, but they're also looking for. The livability alongside the communities and that council should. It is beneficial to look at this, if I can phrase it that way, as a. A package of amenities and a community that's being offered as opposed to, do you find that that's something that people are looking for, I guess? Right, in terms of?
For sure, and I also think it's it will serve the larger context of of the whole neighborhood as well. So this is really the anchor for uh the community.
Right, and the community amenities are, am I correct, that predicated on to the agreement, the vision that was aligned on by both the proponent and staff that. They are also not just sort of out of the norm, but they're also being delivered. Earlier, like I believe, is it not buildings one and two that are slated to, am I correct, complete earlier? Like, we're not having to wait as we have some other. Projects for the delivery of the housing first. Um and we've seen that can lead to long delays or we see. Example, each great plans where we don't see the community amenities delivered, but there's actually a commitment to delivering these in a timely way.
They're currently under construction, building one and two, with all the civic centers currently under construction.
Right, so the amenities are not dependent on. Having like council could have some assurance that those are going to be delivered.
They're under construction.
That's pretty, that's a that's good insurance. Um okay, thank you. I'll leave my questions there for now.
Councillor Kerr?
Yeah, thank you. Um Mr. Enriquez, I was very interested in your introduction to this um uh to the changes here and um. And you talked about the mall and the fact that the mall had been closed or was closed and um I'm just wondering that, you know. Oakridge was always cited as our second municipal town center largely because of the mall. What do you envision? Um is the future of that mall oriented shopping? Do you see it morphing? Um or do you see that still as a sort of. Commercial anchor to this space?
It's both a commercial anchor as well as it's going to adapt to the changing face of retail, which will be more more uh experientially oriented. With a lot of performance venues and and a whole series of things that'll be very community based. And what we have is a design where the inside and the outside with the public park really merge and is something for the entire city to participate in.
Okay, um my second question was around the park. The park has morphed since the first time I saw the the designs of it. Um how is accessibility? I mean, you're adding a lot of residents, which is fantastic in terms of having park there. What's the accessibility for them? Um throughout the day?
Accessibility has been greatly improved over the years. If you remember, the first design had a two level, it's two levels up in the air. We brought a substantial amount of it down to grade, um downright off the civic center, as well as reduce most of the upper levels to one level. And we've increased the number of uh uh areas to access the park from five locations with seven public elevators. Four staircases, a pair of escalators outside, two pairs of escalators inside. In terms of accessibility, we've worked very hard with staff to make sure that it's accessible for everyone.
Yeah, I've seen that change and I appreciate it very much. Um third question, um the mall is serviced by transit, obviously. The Canada Line is key. We all know the capacity of the Canada Line uh appears to be limited by the length of the stations at this point. Um one of the questions coming from the community is around uh the support for and the desire for um increased ground transportation. Do you have any thoughts on that and access to ground um uh ground oriented transit? Um from especially near the buildings that you're proposing, the new ones? Or the increased ones?
Great. Are are we, are you talking about public transit?
Yeah, I'm talking about public transit.
Yeah, well, and we've worked really hard with TransLink and we continue to do so to upgrade the station. We're going to be adding extra es- escalators. To make it more accessible. We've worked on uh the whole uh interface with the with the buses along Forty First Street to make sure the transit up there. Is is enlarged and improved. And so engineering has been very, very serious about all of this and and staff is working with us to make it better.
Great, and final question. Um I I and I appreciate that because I think that's the future, obviously, especially in a climate challenged world. Um the um final question has to do with the range of of amenities. Um the civic center, the, you know, um performance space, the senior center, et cetera. Um I can't remember, was childcare included in that too?
Yes, we have s- we have sixty-nine uh childcare spaces. It'll be one of the largest in the city. That's on top of the million dollar contribution. Um it's actually one of the most diverse programs we've ever worked on in the history of our practice in terms of community amenities. And we're really, really proud of it. And so you have to give kudos to the five or six departments within the staff. Um who've worked very hard to make sure each one of these uh components are are meaningful to the community.
Okay, thank you. Um is there a youth center as well? I remember in another application we received recently, there was.
We have a youth center within the community center.
Great, okay. Great, thanks. Appreciate your answers.
Thank you, uh councillor Dejanova.
Thanks, um just a couple of questions. I was wondering if I'm impressed by by uh what I've seen, especially over the years. Um on on the way that this is has um morphed and and the applicants worked with staff. I'm just wondering. Um the shadow policy that stated in the referral report from January twenty-fifth. I want to make sure that, and and I'm asking the applicant and I'll ask staff afterwards, was this based on our shadow policy? Or were you held to the shadow bulletin, which is not yet a policy?
Um I I I guess what the promise we made uh was that in adding the extra height and uh in density. That we would would not increase shadows on the park one square foot. And so what we did is we wrote a very complicated grasshopper script, which is a program, and we shaped the buildings of the new extra height in more. Um sympathetic orientation to the path of the sun to make sure that not one ounce of shadow was added to the park. Uh more than the approved two thousand and fourteen uh rezoning.
Okay, thank you very much. Um most of the amenities I see here are public amenities. I know my colleagues have touched on some of that, but these aren't just amenities for people who will be living in the residences at Oakridge. These will be amenities that are are a part of a master plan community, but also extend to uh the greater community and city. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we own and operate it by the city and given turnkey to the city. Yes.
Thanks. Um and now I know I I know that we have staff coming back in um. In the next few months on extended or twenty-four hour childcare as per um a motion that council had unanimously supported that I put forward. I'm just wondering, would it be too late if council approved this today, considering the proximity to healthcare centers to um? Have that daycare or childcare conform to twenty-four hour or extended hour childcare?
Um that will be totally in the realm of the city to decide for themselves, because this building is theirs.
Okay, that's uh that's great to know. And then also, I'm just wondering if um. If the applicant applied for or was offered the short program or the delivery of the social housing? Or the non-market housing as we as we've seen with our um short. I mean.
You mean, you're talking about expedited expedited approval process, you mean?
Yes, the short program, the expedited approval.
Unfortunately.
Your rental tenure, yes.
Yeah, uh unfortunately, our project, I say, all the pieces are integrated integrated into one very complex uh Rubik's Cube and and uh. Staff have been amazing in helping us sort that all out and and we're we're grateful for it.
Okay, um so that's good to know, but there will be the most affordable housing, which I'm understanding is under is under construction right now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's very good to know. Thank you very much. You've answered all of my questions. I may have questions for staff through points of information after. Actually, I will ask staff one question. If I can now, Mayor, considering my time. Um I'm just going to ask about the twenty-four hour extended um. Hour childcare, considering the proximity to transit and also nearby healthcare centers. If that's a consideration the city would be making for the childcare space, considering the significance of sixty-nine spaces on the site?
Hi councillor Dejanova, it's Sipia Rousseau, senior rezoning planner. Just to note that the childcare space is part of the previous approval. And under this application, um is a one million dollar contribution to childcare in the Canby corridor area.
Okay, I I I do understand that through through the C A C process, but because this is a part of the larger process and we're here to consider. Um not only the application in front of us today, but the entire project, I I was just hoping that you might. Share whether or not that would be considered, the million dollars would be considered to be used for twenty-four hour extended. Hour childcare?
Councillor Dejanova will um review that uh during questions and get back to you um with our uh responses later this evening.
I don't want to, I I thank you. I I don't need an answer as to whether it will be, just whether or not it will be considered. So thanks very much, and I'll leave my questions there. Mayor, as I understand, we have speakers.
Thanks, that's it for this round of questions. We'll now move to uh registered speakers and we have, I think, eleven. Let's go to the list here. Okay. So the first speaker is uh Richard Littlemore, speaker number one, Richard Littlemore.
Hello.
Hi there, you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you. Um good evening. My name is Richard Littlemore. I speak to you tonight as a resident of the Hemingway, a sixty-two unit condominium complex at Forty-Fifth and Canby. Directly south of the Oakridge project. Um some of you might recognize the building as one that we share with the B C offices of Saint John Ambulance. I'm also president of the Hemingway Strata Council, so while I speak as an individual, I hope to fairly represent the sentiments of many of my neighbors. Uh full disclosure, though, I have worked for West Bank as a freelance writer, including on this project. If you've seen the giant Oakridge volume called The Living City, you will have read my prose. Uh so you might not be surprised to hear that uh perhaps unusual among Hemingway residents, I regard the Oakridge redevelopment as a good idea in a perfect location. It was a travesty to have a suburban shopping mall surrounded by fourteen acres of surface parking on some of the most valuable land in the country. What is coming will be immeasurably better for me, for my neighbors and for the whole city. But the process is a nightmare. Uh it began for us three years ago in March twenty. Uh, it began for us three years ago in March twenty nineteen when the city closed Ash Street for a couple of months um so that West Bank uh could connect to major sewer line, the major sewer line on Forty Ninth Avenue. A year later, Ash Street still closed. They also closed Forty Ninth, hemming us in entirely until October twenty twenty. Imagine that year and a half, especially during the early months of COVID, when you couldn't hope to get a delivery. The only way out of our building was to drive out of the parcade, do a one eighty into the the top of the ramp, and then drive four blocks down a choked one-lane back alley, at the end of which your only option was to turn right on Forty Ninth. Running this alley gauntlet was like having, living on the wrong side of the Lions Gate Bridge. You never knew how much time it was gonna take. It might only be five minutes. But with every Ash Street resident also fighting over that access, they were more likely to get stuck in a four-block-long traffic jam. And that was all before the construction began. Yet from early twenty nineteen and for every day since, the residents of Heming- of the Hemingway have been living in a loud, dirty industrial park. When they were excavating the street in front of my second-floor balcony, you could scrape the dust off my wife's nineteen twenty-seven Steinway with a shovel. Our carpets, drapes, and upholstery will never be restored to their original color. As for the racket, I've been thinking about installing an automated sign in the Hemingway elevators so we can more easily record the rolling exemptions to the city noise bylaw, the next big concrete pour coming to a Saturday near you. This dish rattling disruption has also been expensive. During a period when Vancouver, Metro Vancouver real estate prices have increased by more than thirty percent, my assessments have gone down. I know or hope that the value will rebound once the project is finished, but that won't help those of my neighbors who have had to sell in the meantime. I raise all this not simply to complain, though it was nice to get all that off my chest. Rather, I'm hoping to encourage council to think about the time and cost of city decision-making. I'm a supporter, an enthusiast. Uh, I think this redevelopment was essential and I admire what West Bank and Enrique's and partner Enrique's partners have done. Uh, I think the density is appropriate and the height acceptable. Um, I also applaud the city for having leveraged more rental and lower-income housing, but I'm exhausted and we're not halfway there. The U S General George Patton once said, "A good plan violently executed now is better than a perfect plan executed next week." And I have to agree. I would never suggest that you throw out the City Hall rulebook, but I hope, having can, having vetted this project so extensively, that you consider every additional intervention, every referral, every review uh extends the stress and increases the cost to me and my neighbors. This is a good plan. I hope you will approve the rezoning and get down to expediting the work and minimizing its impact. It will be so nice to get it done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so I am gonna move on to the next speaker, but thank you so much for uh calling in tonight. We have uh Gary Jobin, speaker number two, Gary Jobin.
Hello.
Hi there, you have up to five minutes. Yes, we can, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I I want to first acknowledge you on Street Atlanta, the Musqueam Squamis and Salute people who will allow founder names to speak to this project. Uh, my name's Gary Jobin. I'm indigenous. I work with a program called Blade Runners. Our mandate is uh to help street-involved youth build careers in the construction trades. Ninety percent of our of of our participants are indigenous and most have never had a job in any industry. As well, all our coordinators are indigenous. We support this project and the many jobs it's creating in construction. We have currently placed a number of kids on this project and we're beaten with the substrates as the construction phase moves forward to to secure meaningful employment and to begin to build careers in the trades for our kids. One of our participants, a girl named Tatum, started as a flagger in December with Right Way Traffic. At the time she started, she was struggling with housing, self-esteem, and never worked in construction. Today, Tatum continues to thrive with Right Way and now has moved into our housing, Blade Runners Place, at two fifty Palas Street. And she loves it and she's a great tenant. These types of developments create hope, opportunities, break cycles of poverty and income assistance as many of our kids didn't get to see their mother dad go to work, many due to the effect of residential score. Many of our kids will go on to this project as entry-level workers. By the time this project is done, they will leave a skilled labor, much like we've seen with the developments such as Woodwards, Teles Gardens, Shangri-La, and Vancouver House, just to name a few. It's estimated that we will need eighty thousand tradespeople in the in the next ten years in B C. We can develop our own skilled labor with projects and partnerships like this, and that's why Blade Runners supports this project. Thank you, and we ask the creator to bless all the workers on this project and keep them safe, because it's a it's a very big project. Many cranes, overhead crane swinging, uh trucks coming and going, and so we ask the creator to bless all the workers on this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in this evening. Appreciate your your input on this project. You don't have any questions uh from council, so I will go to the next speaker. Uh, council, our next speaker is uh Catherine Robidou.
Hello.
Hi there, you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Catherine Robidou and I'm a local resident here in Vancouver and I'd like to speak in support of the Oak Ridge proposal. So I have a long background in the performing arts and I'm currently working in um specifically in dance. As you probably know, the arts and especially the performing arts have been hit hard by the restrictions that have been necessary because of COVID nineteen. Before that, we had already seen the slow loss of performing arts venues in Vancouver and some of them have been due to redevelopment. That's why I wanted to support the Oak Ridge project tonight. It is rare to see cultural spaces as part of development proposals, especially large ones. Far too often, these spaces are overlooked and without them, we lose what makes our city so vibrant and unique. Oak Ridge obviously delivers on a lot of city priorities, like rental and affordable housing and park space, but what I want to comment on tonight is the opportunities that it will provide for the performing arts. This is not an afternoon in the design. It's front and center as part of the indoor and outdoor spaces. I'm excited to see the informal performance spaces integrated in the park design as well as full indoor venues that will together serve a wide range of local artists. Unfortunately, arts and culture often gets overlooked in favor of what is considered more urgent, like rental housing. Not only does Oak Ridge deliver these urgent amenities like rental housing, but they know that without the development of culture, the community won't be successful. So thank you for your time to hear me out tonight, and I hope you choose to vote yes in support of this project.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions from council for you, but do appreciate you uh phoning in to contribute today. Uh, we are going to our next speaker, who is uh Doha Tibet.
Hello.
Hi there, uh you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you, thank you so much. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and speak about this development. Uh, my name is Della Savis. I'm a business administration student currently living in Vancouver and I work at Linger College in West Forty Ninth Avenue, so I'm in that area daily. Um, I support this project and very eager to see it move forward. Um, like many, it hasn't been easy to find a place to live that is amenity-rich and near my school and workplace at Linger. So um this development would deliver a lot of what we need in that community because of the public benefits it delivers. And to speak as someone currently working in Linger College, there is an increasing number of faculty and staff and it would be fantastic to have the option to rent housing there someday and have all the amenities available as opposed to having to commute daily. And it would also be amazing to have that kind of community space for us to access after work as well. I'm particularly excited about the library. Um, and to speak from an international student perspective, the number of international students enrolling at our college is increasing annually. So having a nearby civic center, as well as the arts and cultural programs that includes indoor and outdoor music venues, a food hall, and the public park would be fantastic and it would really enrich the student experience. Um, it also makes sense to me because it's thought-thinking and it would be great for young families too. And I also appreciate that it that it includes social housing in a senior center, so it's a space for everyone. And like many students and people just starting their careers, I rely heavily on transit and the fact that this development is right on it is really helpful. So I think it'd be a great addition to the city and to serve the community, and I can see myself hopefully living and working there someday. So I look forward to it being open to the public soon, and thank you again for the opportunity to speak and for your time.
Thanks so much. I don't see any questions for you from council, so I'm going to move to the next speaker, but really appreciate you phoning in tonight. Uh, next speaker is Jaseveen Kaur.
Hello.
Hi there, you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart, and council members, for this opportunity to present my thoughts on the proposed Oak Ridge development. Uh, my name is Jaseveen Kaur, a recent graduate from Linger College. I would like to share my opinion in favor of this project. I am uh located near the Riley Park community, which is about a five-minute drive to Oak Ridge. Uh, looking at the proposal, I was sure that this is the kind of place I would have looked for when I was a student at Linger. And I know that I'm not the only one. As we all know, rental prices and transportation costs in Vancouver are really high and I think a place like the Oak Ridge Development will help in solving these issues. Its vicinity to the school, accessibility to rapid transit, affordable housing, and a wide range of facilities make it a perfect place for young students. Moreover, this development will create a number of full-time and part-time jobs, not only through the creation of new office spaces, but also via the other services that will be developed as part of this project. Also, with the situation around the world and Canada's overall immigration target, it is safe to say that we can expect more people coming from other parts of the world to the city of Vancouver who plan to live and work here. This will not only increase the demand for affordable rental housing, but also for more jobs in the area. I think this project is also a great way of bringing the hub of entertainment and social buzz into the community, something that one could only experience so far in downtown Vancouver. Therefore, for these reasons, I support this proposal. Thank you again for the opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you. Uh, there are no questions for you, but thanks again for uh calling in tonight. Uh, I'm gonna move to the next speaker, who is Gavin Duffus. Speaker number six, Gavin Duffus.
Hello.
Hi there, uh up to five minutes, please.
Hi, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Gavin Duffus. I am the Economic Development Manager with the Downtown Vancouver Business Improvement Association. We support this rezoning amendment. The Downtown Vancouver B I A represents thousands of businesses and property owners in the downtown core. Every so often, you hear from us supporting development projects outside of the downtown area, and that is when they have direct benefits to downtown and the entire city. And Oak Ridge is certainly one of those projects. The hundreds of additional rental housing units, including below-market rental units, will help address both the housing shortage and the labor shortage. Downtown and other employment zones in the city rely on a healthy supply of affordable housing along transit corridors. Having a sustainable and reliable commute into work is a top priority for the current workforce and it will continue to be a priority for future employees. Sites like Oak Ridge, which are directly integrated with the Skytrain system, should maximize their housing potential. Therefore, this rezoning has our full support and we look forward to the benefits it will bring to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so I'll move on to the next speaker. Uh, next speaker is uh speaker number eight, Nathan Davidovich.
Members of council, um, uh, some councillors said that we cannot discuss change of policy at rezoning meeting, but you all voted. You all voted for councillor Swanson's motion in May of twenty twenty for staff to report back about the Camby corridor. And if staff is refusing to do that, that's why you should turn down all these rezoning items. Very simple. If not, fire the staff, get new staffs who can do what you asked them to do. You know, I mean, you can reactivate the P T and E committee, the the Planning, Transportation, and Environment Committee that existed, uh, so you can make policy changes. The P T and E committee is still shown on the city clerk's screen. The the developers of Fifty Seventh and Camby offered twenty million dollars toward the reconstruction of the Fifty Seventh Avenue uh Skytrain Station. What is Oak Ridge offering to upgrade the Oak Ridge Station? Maybe one million dollar, but we need five, you know? Uh, this is the most used station outside downtown. We need major upgrading. We have an opportunity to get the money and, you know, I mean, uh, it's nothing to do with TransLink. It's the B C government through the Ministry of Transportation that's in charge of building rail projects. And we need uh a proper single elevator, for example, from the street level to the platform level to downtown that right now you need to take three elevators to get to that platform. This is not proper accessibility. I'm waiting for the disabled to file a report with the uh uh Human Rights Commissioner. And I mean, we have the B C Disability Act now enforced, and this is not accessibility. We need more elevators and escalators and bike facilities like the Bay just proposed in downtown Vancouver. Why isn't Oak Ridge proposing that? What kind of people are they? What, you know, are they out of? They don't even know what's going on in other developments uh and other stations, you know? Uh, by twenty thirty, uh, uh, I mean, um, we like, uh, we we need to upgrade, as I pointed out before in other meetings, the east side emergency exit to include a new entrance so people do not need to cross Camby Street. That's a very simple thing to do, but it could be done. By twenty thirty, when Oak Ridge redevelopment is finished, this station would be overcrowded and many Vancouver residents and and people at the new Oak Ridge development would be left on the platform as the trains will be full with Richmond riders. So let's get going and upgrade the station, do something, but not just sit down and do nothing because you don't have the authority to do anything. Contact the Ministry of Transportation and get get the station upgraded. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so we'll uh move on to the uh ninth and final registered speaker, uh, Camilla Ichikawa, Ichikawa.
Um, hi, good night. First, thank you for the opportunity to comment on the Oak Ridge rezoning application. My name is Camilla and I am a Vancouver resident. I am an international student who is enrolled in classes at Linger and I live nearby. So I like the idea of having a nine-acre park in the neighborhood where I will, I can have a a pleasant walking after working the whole day, so I think it would be very interesting. Also, I have a space uh for cultural activities and most of them just happen in downtown. So I think it's nice to have more events in a different location other than downtown. And also finding a place to live was not easy. Moreover, the rental price in Vancouver is really expensive. So creating more affordable rental units uh will facilitate the lives of people who are looking for a place to live in the city. Adding the fact that about um two hundred eight square feet on of offices, it means you'll create more job space and so more jobs in the neighborhood. So uh for these reasons, I support the project, so thank you for your time.
Thanks so much. Uh, I don't see any questions for you, so I'll just say thank you so much for uh calling in tonight. Uh, and with that, I will make my first call for other speakers, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero uh three nine nine zero one hashtag or pound. Uh, just ask the clerks, is there anybody on the line or in the chambers to speak to this item?
Who just, excuse me, two additional speakers on the line, Mayor.
Great, uh, we can hear the first speaker. If you could just say your uh name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can, uh, just needed your name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver and up to five minutes, please.
My name is Tracy Boucher. I work in Vancouver. I used to be a resident, but I'm now in the suburbs of Delta. Um, I work at Marple Oak Ridge Family Place, and Marple Oak Ridge Family Place has been in the community, providing programs, support, resources, outreach, services, and community connection for over 44 years to families, seniors, and vulnerable adults. Um, I'm reading from my notes, so Marple Oak Ridge Family Place would like to express our support for the proposed rezoning and refinements to the Oak Ridge Development, specifically, we're in favor of the increased rental and below-market housing, family-friendly outdoor amenities, and the Childcare Community Centre and Senior Centre. We favor the proposal of 283 market rental units and 130 moderate-income rental units for families with children to be able to afford rental accommodation. The majority of families accessing the Marple Oak Ridge Family Place are low-income families and more likely to trend towards the $30,000 per year income, if not lower. The affordability, affordable rental unit proposal will help some families, although many will still not be able to afford accommodation in Oak Ridge. However, this planning is a step in the right direction. We support the idea of a new community centre serving Oak Ridge as it brings amenities to central Oak Ridge. We also favor the inclusion of green spaces. We are in support of the 69-spot childcare options and out-of-school care options, as crucial for the parents of our community who have long struggled to obtain daycare options. We recommend that the proposed daycare and out-of-school options offer a percentage of affordable spots for low-income families who often need this support the most. With regard to the Senior Centre, which is included in the Oak Ridge plans, we clearly understand that the Senior Centre is not part of the amendment going forward. We nevertheless must point out, as the amendment goes forward, the critical and integral importance of the Senior Centre as part of the Civic Centre project. Plans going forward for families and children cannot be completed without consideration and inclusion of our community of seniors. Seniors are not only part of the community of families and children, but are vital to the health and growth of the intergenerational society. In addition, the learnings from COVID-19 pandemic have shown us that the lethal effects on seniors who are isolated from this mainstream community. Seniors depend on being connected to community to avoid being isolated and entangled to their inclusion in ensuring they are part of the infrastructure when city planning and development is underway, such as the case with Oak Ridge right now. We know from our collaborations with the Oak Ridge Senior Centre, which closed when the Oak Ridge renovations began, that it was a wonderful resource for seniors, offering homes from home, cooked meals, entertainment, and community of connection. We look forward to seeing amendments to the Oak Ridge proposal move forward, which will in turn see the Senior Centre is reinstated in a timely manner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so, uh, again, uh, appreciate your participation, and we'll move on to the second speaker. Clerks, do we have speaker number two on the line?
Yes, Tracy Moore.
Tracy Moore.
Staff have just notified me she's disconnected.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, so that's, uh, was that the first call? I think it was the first call, so we'll have the second call for speakers. 1-833-353-8610-39901. Pound. Clerks, anybody else? Chambers or telephone?
Uh, Tracy's back on the line, Mayor.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi there, you've up to five minutes, uh, just your full name and, uh, whether or not you're a resident of Vancouver, please.
Sure, just want to make sure you can hear me well.
Sure can.
So, good evening, Mr. Chair and Councillor, it's Tracy Moyer, Chair of Oak Ridge Langaria Residents. Just to confirm, I am a registered speaker this evening. OLR began our efforts regarding the changes coming to the Oak Ridge Mall nine years ago. We opposed this rezoning application in 2014, and we oppose the text amendment now. Both times, we feel the proponents and city staff were site-focused with little regard for the impact off-site. We are very proud of the wins OLR achieved leading up to 2014. We secured a two-and-a-half-acre park at Gray. We achieved far improved accessibility to the green roof. The city and TransLink both agreed with us that a second 41st ingress, egress is needed for the crushing crowds that will be in the station when train's empty, and this has been secured, hopefully, uh, one block north. And more emergency services are needed for the neighborhood. I think I heard Mr. Enriquez this evening take credit for some of these improvements through their hard work with city staff. I need to note that these improvements were introduced thanks to OLR's foresight and were successful due to our perseverance. It is insulting to ignore our efforts leading up to 2014. On the At Gray Park, we want the privilege to name it, to recognize it as a result of, 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 uh, OLR's efforts for our neighborhood. I asked for councillor to help us work on this. It is so sad and so unfortunate, these wins came after far too much work by OLR. These needed and really practical improvements all should have been attainable just sitting down respectfully with some city planners and our Oak Ridge Mall working team over probably three meetings. And please, we just want you to know that we still feel we are owed one-third of an acre of At Gray Park space because the legal obligation was 2.83 acres, not the 2.5, council accepted. Many of the original reasons why we opposed seven years ago remain unbroken, yet more heightened density, longer shadows into the neighborhood, inappropriate, or I mean, sorry, inadequate improvements for affordability, inadequate capacity increases to the Canada Line. I strongly disagree with Mr. Enriquez's comments that they have worked with the community up, leading up to 2014 and up to this amendment, and I'm happy to share an anecdote about this if you wish to ask me to share it. In the previous rezoning, the tallest towers were closest to the subway. Terrible impact on the terrace of Strata Onsite and the neighboring community, but there was some logic behind placing the tallest by the station. Now, if we were to divide, divide the nearby neighborhood into four quadrants from the intersection of 41st and Cambie, the southeast quadrant is feeling especially mistreated. This quadrant, which is directly east of the mall, is now out to deal with the tallest tower, a whopping 52-story, almost 770-foot skyscraper, proposed right at 43rd Avenue. Mr. Enriquez was very clear, saying the additional height contemplated now does not worsen shadowing on the green roof. What about Columbia Park, which is one block east? The increasingly important Columbia Park has shadow protection built into it in the Cambie corridor plan. Back to the quadrant, as you recall, on the other east side of Cambie, you approved a 34-story tower on the north side of 43rd, 29 stories on the south side, and that one's really hurtful because its podium, if you remember, is the appropriate height facing Cambie, but much taller on their rear facing the neighborhood. It makes us feel like you don't want to have the well-heeled residents living at the Oak Ridge Centre Mall seeing the tall podium between 43rd and 44th. And it doesn't matter about the people, whether it's the current people or future people living behind that podium, behind Cambie. We really want to know what's happening in this area, the MTC. We believe this area, the MTC, that there's an explanation why this quad, quadrant is being treated so particularly badly. OLR asked that you refer this amendment back to staff. We don't accept, expect you to care about the impositions of the proposed changes on the surrounding neighborhood. We've learned that lesson in the past, many times. So we are limiting, limiting our position to what we believe the changes proposed for housing affordability. And this is our comment. The changes regarding housing affordability should be evaluated against the entire project, not just the changes in this text amendment. You're gonna reopen the rezoning, reopen all the statistics, statistics for everything. And if you were to do that, we are confident you would find the amount of below-market rental and social housing for this site is woefully inadequate. And it also provides you and the proponents the opportunity to seek senior government funding to actually get some adequate affordability from this, this site. This is the biggest site in Western Canada, and if this is all that can be achieved with affordability, this needs to be re-analyzed.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you. Uh, you do have questions from councillor Hardwick. Uh, councillor Hardwick, please, uh, go ahead.
Well, thank you. Um, you did mention something about sharing an anecdote.
Thank you, councillor Hardwick. Um, if you remember the old Zeller space inside the mall, that was opened up for a city open house. This was not a proponent's open house, it was a city open house. The city had their wonderful, uh, presentation boards up on stands, as well did the proponent. OLR brought little yellow stickers, little post-its, and felt tip pens for people to mark their commentary on the boards, because there didn't seem to be a, um, other than just writing a, a comment sheet as you were preparing to leave, we didn't think there'd be enough opportunity to share public opinion and certainly maybe even engage some kind of conversations around some of the more contentious parts of the proposal. City didn't have any problems with us doing it, however, Mr. Enriquez did. He was very angry, and he started running around ripping off the, uh, yellow post-its.
Hmm.
That's what we, that's what we thought was, okay, this is gonna be typical of how the public comment is going to be respected or not with this proposal. Uh, councillor George Affleck, uh, is my witness. Uh, I immediately went to councillor Affleck when I first was alerted of this, and, uh, he was, of course, in the Zeller space, and I said, well, I said George, but, you know, I guess I should say councillor Affleck here, um, I just said, look, look at what, what Gregory's doing.
And?
Things did not improve. That was the end of it. What's the coun, what's one councillor gonna do in a room with about 150 people? I, uh, took my
I don't know what to say.
I asked, I asked Mr. Enriquez to stop doing it. Um, uh, he didn't. I eventually, uh, raised my voice, and that got his attention. He stopped doing it at that point.
Just gonna interject here, I, I'm appreciative of, uh, you know, the comments, but I think councillor Hardwick, if you could direct your questions to, uh, you know, the content of the text proposal here, that would be great.
My comments?
No, direct.
I'm not making any comments.
Sure, okay.
I directed the question. Uh, the speaker said that she had an anecdote that she was interested in communicating, so that was what I, um, requested, and I think, um, that has been communicated, and I say thank you to the speaker for sharing that.
Thanks. Councillor Carr, up to five minutes.
Great, thanks so much, Ms. Moore, for, um, all your work for over many, many years with OLR. Um, so my question is really posed on the fact that this particular amendment has to do with housing, has to do with increasing some, um, more affordable housing. Uh, you've pointed out the, um, the deficit in, in terms of a, a more fair proportion of affordable housing. Um, but my question to you is, um, with the range of public benefits that come, um, as a result of a development and increased density, do you feel that the Oak Ridge development provides sufficient public benefits in the form of the community centre, the library, the senior centre, the park, the, sort of, there's a whole range of public benefits there. I know, I know that social housing and affordable housing is a benefit, but is there a trade-off in your mind between getting a lot of those other public benefits to the housing? Would you have preferred more, um, affordable housing as opposed to the value of the other, I mean, the monetary value, CAC value of the other public benefits?
Councillor Carr, thank you for the question, and, um, I believe it's only you and councillor De Genova that were actually at council table when this was, um, uh, decided, and thank you for, for voting in opposition to it in 2014. Um, it's extremely difficult for councillors that were sitting at the table, and I would say impossible for councillors that are newer to have followed all the, all the permutations of this proposal over time. Um, you mentioned some aspects of community amenity, uh, also as Mr. Enriquez did this evening, um, as if they're new additions. They're not. The library's replacing an existing library. The senior centre is replacing an existing senior centre. The park, uh, it's gonna be a wonderful green roof, absolutely, I, I acknowledge that, and the Atlantic Cape architects I, I have the utmost respect for. But the park at Gray, the 2.5-acre park, that is, was an outstanding legal obligation from 1983. So, once you start factoring, removing some of these, what still seem to be marketed as community amenities, um, that are just replacements or obligations that are outstanding for decades, it really does shrink down the size of the overall amenity package for this proposal. And to ask the question more directly, all those things need to be taken out of the equation and researched, if, you know, what more affordability can be provided on this site? Um, it's a terrible tug-of-war between the proponent trying to maximize profit and the city trying to extract as much amenity as possible, but it's essential to do a fair evaluation. You do have to roll it back to the beginning and look at the complete project, not just incremental changes, and the percentage of, I think it's 49% or 47%, that's not the relevant percentage. Social housing, we complained in 2014, the social housing part of this is inadequate. All major sites have to do social housing and other amenities. How come this one doesn't have to do the minimum social housing with all the extra amenities? Did that answer your question, councillor?
Yeah, it did. It did. I really appreciate that. Thanks a lot.
Councillor De Genova.
Thanks so much, and I remember many times you coming to council to speak on this item. I'm just, I'm wondering about the affordability that you'd mentioned, uh, Tracy, and, and I appreciate you coming and sharing your comments. And I, I have to say, we're talking about this project, but I look at sites like Little Mountain, and I'm very aware about how affordable that housing could have been 10 years ago and where it is now. So when we add time, we add cost. And do you think we can afford to do that in one of the least affordable cities in the world? I mean, we have two buildings under construction right now, and amenities that need to be delivered, including, you know, childcare spaces. If we keep going at the rate we're going, I'm, I'm just asking you, do you think we'll be able to deliver those? Maybe by the time I'm a grandmother, I have a four-year-old right now, so.
Great point, councillor De Genova, but it really is up to the proponent who is driving the timeframe here. If they decided not to do a rezoning, uh, or sorry, a text amendment now, um, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. So, I mean, who's to say they're not gonna come back another couple of years and do another text amendment? The only additional amenity we can see is affordability. We question the amount of affordability. We don't think it's adequate, but, um, it, it, it's, we, and, and I know social housing's very important to you, councillor. You must feel some stress knowing that this site is not providing even the minimum 20% for social housing. And with this new opportunity, no new social housing. Again, we look at it, you know, looking that, like, looking toward the project and going, okay, well, again, the well-heeled Oak Ridge residents, which is gonna be the vast majority of the people that are gonna be living here, it's, it's gonna be the best views in the city. We all know, uh, Little Mountain is the tallest part of Vancouver. This is not much lower in a value, in elevation. These people, and I don't know how many of the top floors of these top buildings are gonna have the best views in Vancouver.
So can I ask you one more que, oh, sorry, go ahead. So I have one more question, I have one minute, so.
Yes.
I, I was gonna ask, I mean, here's the thing, there's trade-offs, there's amenities that are being delivered, and, and when pro forma's changed, they have to ebb and flow. So what would, to, to see more social housing, I agree with you. I wanna see more social housing, but not the expense of a park or a child, of childcare spaces. So what is it that you would change to increase the amount of affordable housing? What amenity would you scrap on this project?
If we could have a, um, a meeting with, uh, we'd be prepared to, a few of us would be prepared, I think, to sign confidential agreements. We could look at the pro forma. A lot of us have a lot of professional experience that we can understand a pro forma. We would be able to figure out what, what would we be prepared to give up. It all comes down to dollars, so I can't just say, oh, give up that library because it only costs a million bucks. Well, first of all, the community would have my head because it's just a replacement of what we had. Um, but it's not
Can I ask you a question? Sorry, sorry, I do have a little more time. We're a public hearing, sorry, I hold myself to three minutes uh, for the council meetings, but I have up to five, so you can go ahead, Tracy, but uh, who would be in this small exclusive group of people who would look at the pro forma? And I'm asking that because is the nurse who's driving to BC Women's or VGH and needs childcare for her child, is, is that the person who's gonna be involved in this confidential group that's gonna look at the pro forma? I'm just, I'm wondering, I understand what you're saying, but it, would it just be OLR, or would you suggest it be other people, and how long would that take?
Well, I'd suggest it to people that deserve a seat at the table. So those are people that have followed this from the, from at least nine years ago, because the details get locked over time. You listen to the presentations by the proponent and your city staffers, and a lot of the details can't be presented, there's just not enough time. So, to answer the question, I would think that So to answer the question, I would think that it could be a, a group of probably even as small as three people. Um, our first choices would be people from like the executive level of our working group. I mean.
Well, I mean, I, I'm not even sure that would fit into the process of, of what we're allowed to do. But I, I, I do understand and appreciate you continuing to come to speak to council. I really want to highlight that and thank you for answering my questions, Tracy. And I hope we'll keep seeing you on not only this project, but others.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, that is it for questions for you, Speaker. Thank you so much for, uh, coming in this evening. And, uh, Clerks, I'm going to make our third and final call. So we'll take a, uh, five-minute break, come back at 9:35 to, uh, try to complete this item. Thank you. We'll see you in five minutes. Hello, Speaker?
Hi, can you hear me?
Okay, I'm up to five minutes, please.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for giving me the time to speak today. My name is Erin Sinura. I'm a lifelong resident of Vancouver. I work in the Canby corridor and I'm also a member of the real estate industry. Uh, I spoke in behalf of West Bank's Oak Ridge project as a student back in 2014 during the original rezoning process. And I've been following the progress of this development for the past eight years. I'm very happy to have the opportunity to return and share my support for the proposed changes to the development plan. Uh, it certainly isn't news to anybody that Vancouver is a challenging city to live and make a living in. Um, homeownership is frankly out of reach for many people in Vancouver and my generation especially has had to adjust our expectations around what homeownership means for us. If we want to stay in Vancouver, long-term renting is the new reality. But unfortunately, in Vancouver at this time, the city simply does not have adequate rental product in order to serve the number of long-term and/or permanent renters that are already making sacrifices in order to call Vancouver home. Uh, the high-risk and high-need residents in the city certainly require a lot more attention, but there is still a large group of under-housed residents in the missing middle that are currently in spaces that are poorly maintained, poorly managed, and aging beyond their useful life. For myself and my peers, the, the lack of available and appropriate housing has become a very real obstacle that has prevented many of us from moving into the next phase of our lives with any sense of housing security. It is imperative that we find ways to create housing opportunities for younger people in this city to carve out a life here where they can build businesses and grow families and just be part of neighbourhoods and communities that provide a sense of stability over the long term. So taking this into account, I can enthusiastically support the proposed amendments to the Oak Ridge development. Considering how much this city has changed since 2014, I, I think it's very commendable that West Bank has been able to reassess this project and adapt it to the changing needs of this city. I think it is wonderful to see how such a monumental project can evolve with our city to create diverse communities and also deliver homes that people can be proud to live in for the long term. Overall, uh, the proposed height and density increases really have very little fundamental impact on the surrounding neighbourhood. However, the marked increase in both affordable and market rental housing, as well as high-quality office space located outside of the downtown core, is an easy win for the city. This is space that we need. And the fact that this can be fit into an already-approved, transit-oriented, amenity-rich and green-focused community development is an incredible opportunity. It is creative development solutions like this that allow people like myself to see a viable future in this city. We need more space that supports renters and allows middle-income earners to have a healthy, sustainable, high quality of life. I think this is a thoughtful improvement to the Oak Ridge development plan that will have a positive impact on the Canby corridor and the city of Vancouver. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Uh, I don't, uh, see any questions for you. So we'll just thank you for calling in tonight, Clerks. So just check, is there anybody else on the line?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Thanks. Uh, can I have someone move the motion then, please?
So moved, Counselor DeGenova.
We have a seconder.
Kirbya.
Thank you. Okay. Now we're in the debate discussion, uh, section of this council. We have, uh, 20 minutes, 20 minutes till 10. Just to remind you, uh, Counselor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Uh, can I get a point of information to staff?
Yep.
I was just looking at the memo we got in response to my motion to increase housing affordability in the Canby quarter. And it said there was going to be a report back in this quarter. Is that still happening?
Uh, go to the planning staff.
Counselor, just one moment.
Counselor would like to, our staff would like to direct this question to our housing staff, Dan Garrison or one of the staff, I think, are on the line.
Great.
Hi, Counselor Dan Garrison, Housing Policy. I have the memo in front of me and I'm, uh, looking at it. It's actually our community planning division that does the report back on the plan implementation. And, uh, unfortunately, I'm not, I'm not sure where they're at with the work right now. So, uh, we'll have to, we'll have to get back to you, uh, on that. I'll have to, uh, I'll have to check in with Neil Vershawey and, uh, and get back to you on that. Apologies, councillor.
Okay, that's, that's good. Thanks. If you could just maybe send me an email or something. Um, I'll just, um, say that I know this is an attempt by staff to get some more affordability and I appreciate that. Um, but we're still, even with this attempt, we're still at 87% of the housing is for people that are making more than 80%. And only 13, 80, making more than 80,000. So if we could get it, we need to get it up to at least, I would say, you know, 50% would be great. But for this, I would settle for 20. If we could get up to 20% for people earning 80%, I think that would be good. Um, I know that, you know, folks are saying we can't have affordable housing because all the money is going into the library and the childcare and the senior center. But the fact is that when a developer puts money into those amenities, that increases the value of the condos that he's selling that are part of that development. It increases the rent he can charge in the market rentals. Um, so, and then what happens to places that really are affordable that don't have those amenities? They don't have the amenities. So I, it's, it's a hard, this is a hard decision for me. I, I appreciate the staff's trying to make it more affordable. I appreciate that, uh, social housing is going down to 15,000 and, and not for people who are making 15,000 and not 30,000, which is great. But, um, we desperately, especially when we have a big development like this, we desperately need to get that level of affordability, uh, increased, especially when we're in a housing crisis. That's all.
Counselor Hardwick, up to five.
Yeah, it's been interesting while we've been, uh, having this conversation, I went back and looked at, uh, open houses and things that I'm back on the, first with this project. And, uh, it's just, I guess it's just, it's so frustrating to see, uh, so much of this problem has been created, uh, that we've created for ourselves. This is being driven by the fact that the proponent is seeking greater profit, but the city is seeking greater revenue. Um, but that's the paradigm that has been created here. So points, it's not affordable. Only 13% of 420 units are affordable. 130 affordable rentals plus 290 social housing units. That means, as Counselor Swanson just pointed out, 87% are not affordable. Uh, 23, 2,330 market condos asking $2,000 to $2,500 per square foot and 573 market rentals is an average rent of 2,200 for a one-bedroom apartment. These home prices and rentals are the highest in Canada. Number two, it is not socially diverse and inclusive community. It is an exclusive enclave for wealthy, wealthy people. I E, 87% are unaffordable market condos and rentals at the highest prices in Canada. Third, it is not green. The middle class of essential workers like nurses, police, firefighters and teachers cannot afford to live in Oak Ridge Centre in the city they serve, so they must commute to work spewing hot gases as they go. So, um, knowing all of this, why would we approve these text amendments? And as one of the speakers pointed out, how long until there's another set of text amendments that come along? And again, I'm looking back over a decade and have watched this emerge. And I know there's at least two councillors that have, have watched this, um, uh, through, uh, prior terms. But it's just, you know, when does it stop? We just continue to pour gas on the dumpster fire of unaffordability through these kinds of actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, counsel, we're at quarter 10, uh, so we may need to extend beyond.
Extend, Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Counselor DeGenova. Just to finish the item, um, I presume, do we have a seconder for that?
Counselor Boyle.
Thank you, Counselor Boyle. All in favor extending, yea?
Yea.
Uh, oppose, nay? Next. Counselor Boyle, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, and I'll be, uh, brief. I just want to say that, uh, I share the concerns about the overall mix of affordability, um, in this area. Uh, I share the concerns about the, uh, amount of, uh, high-cost housing relative to more affordable housing. Um, and what's on the, uh, table for us to decide on right now is rental and below rental housing. And voting against that isn't going to fix these larger problems that we as a council, uh, have inherited. Um, voting against what's on the table, uh, uh, doesn't, doesn't make things better and in fact moves in opposite direction of what, um, we all seem to want to see. So I, I am grateful for the work that's been done to get more affordability, uh, into this project. Of course, I wish the calculations had been different in all the years before this. Um, but the vote before us is, uh, pretty clear to me and I, I will be glad to see more rental and below-market rental in this neighbourhood.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Kirbya.
Thank you. Um, I'll also try to be brief and that is just approach this, well, with sort of logic and common sense. And I really don't see how, um, not voting or not supporting the text amendment because it's not affordable enough is actually going to move that forward, other than in an ideological, theoretical way. It's not actually going to help affordability. It's just going to keep the existing tenure on the site, which is strata. And we're not going to see the rental and we're not going to see some of the below-market rental. And if we approve the text amendment, we will. And we will also see that without any degradation or compromise to the amenity package. So to me, that's just logic. It makes sense to do that. Um, I also, uh, say that we've had a pandemic, a worldwide pandemic that has turned the world on its ear for everybody. Um, people are having to adjust. And so to not sort of expect that we will come out of something like that and not have to make a number of adjustments, um, to me also doesn't make sense. So, you know, maybe it's the late hour and I'm being really pragmatic and zeroing in on it. Um, but I think that, uh, those are sort of really the salient points to me in this application. Um, and we're still maintaining, I think, the essence of none of those. And I just want to emphasize that point. None of the community amenities have been upgraded. We haven't lost park space, uh, where community centre is still underway and being built. They're still being delivered earlier. We're not going to see the same sorts of issues on the community amenities that we see in freaterlands where we've had to change course, um, on how those get delivered and policies in order to ensure that their finance, that's dependent upon the housing type or tenure. We're not seeing those issues surfacing with the site. So, um, from that perspective and cutting it short, I'm happy to support it. The other thing I'll say in terms of just linking back to the earlier item that we had on the agenda, um, for number three, when we're talking about townhouse types and people said, well, you know, we shouldn't proceed with 70 townhomes because we're losing rental and we're not having affordable rental. Well, this is really immediately, literally a couple of blocks around the corner. Um, and it's going to deliver 273 units and some of those are below-market rental. So, you know, in looking at it in terms of the neighbourhood context. you know, in looking at it in terms of the neighborhood context, boom, um, there it is, and there you go. So, um, I will leave it there in terms of the late hour, but I am happy to support it for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Dejanova, up to five.
Oh, I think, I think I'll close, mayor, as I move the motion. Thanks.
Councillor Carr?
Yeah, um, I really appreciate, um, the, the discussion we're having and the comments of fellow, um, uh, councillors. And I think, um, what, um, that it's, um, it's true that this is not achieving the level of affordability that we wish we were achieving, but we are not voting on the whole project. We are voting on what is happening in this particular amendment. And this amendment is delivering some deeper affordability and some very deep affordability of which I'm grateful. Um, I wish, and I, and I would urge more affordability and other amendments in the future. I really like the fact that we've achieved some good, in the past, some good changes, um, in terms of public amenities that have made, for example, the park more accessible and, you know, delivered, uh, the, the, um, community complex with the senior center, et cetera, in, in a way that really addresses local needs. For these units, though, I'm particularly grateful that there are some at deep levels of affordability, down to a fifteen thousand, um, a year income, um, households, that the priorities are seniors, families with children, people with disabilities. Um, and that fifty percent of the social housing will be for family units, two and three bedrooms, um, which of course is great in terms of the other public amenities on site. So I'm wanting more affordability. Uh, nonetheless, I am going to be supportive of this.
Thank you councillor Carr. Uh, councillor Fry.
Yeah, seeing the, the lateness of the hour, I'll try and keep this brief. Uh, appreciate some of the comments that reflect that this is, in fact, just an amendment to, uh, an existing approved uh, development rezoning that, uh, does provide some improvements. I just really wanted to only get on to highlight that, that I, I, I do, um, I, I was tracking this back in two thousand and fourteen, and then as now, I, I do resent reference to this as transit-oriented development. Like, given the amount of parking that we're supplying on site, it just boggles the mind that we continue down this path. I realize this is not the hill to fight that particular battle on right now, but I do want to highlight that, that, uh, you know, is, is, is inconsistent with what transit-oriented development is supposed to be about, supplying acres of underground parking, it just doesn't, doesn't jive with, with that notion. Um, and I, I hope we can do better, and, and who knows, given the, the amount of times that this particular development proposal has come back to us for amendments, uh, perhaps we'll see it again with even less parking and more actual transit-oriented development. Maybe more affordability, but in the meantime, I, I will support this amendment to the.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Dejanova.
Thanks. I'll also try and be brief, but I really want to thank, um, first of all, the speakers who came out, regardless of if you were speaking in favor or opposition to this. I appreciate those who have hung in there, um, uh, like Tracy has, uh, since the beginning, and, and others who have come out to speak about their hopes for the overall project um, and what they believe this text amendment means for the neighborhood tonight. I also want to thank our staff. I know that, that this has been a decades' work for many of you. And I want to thank the applicant team for hanging in there and, uh, and, and, you know, really working through changes. I know how much this has changed, um, from sort of the first iterations of what Oakridge would look like. And we're not just talking about development or text amendment. We're talking about a part of a master plan community. And I really think that that's important to consider because I see the inclusivity here. Although we're considering the text amendment, it's a part of a legacy. It's a, a piece of the whole project. So although councillor Carr said that we're only voting on one part of this tonight, you know, I fully understand that, that each part of this only works if there are certain trade-offs, and a pro forma will only work if there are certain trade-offs. So if any of my colleagues are thinking about voting against this, I'd hope that you'd consider, what, what would you like to trade for more social housing? Would you like to trade the park space? Would you like to try the childcare? Would you like to trade the open public spaces and, and plazas here? Because this is about the social and more affordable housing in the development, but at the same time, it all, um, hinges on a pro forma. So, when I think about this and, and the many meetings that we've had on Oakridge, overall, I think about what this will be. This will be a part of amen, you know, this will be close to amenities that will help seniors, families, that will really bring in and draw in a community. So luxury units, yes, but does that mean that you can't share the same park as people who possibly have purchased a market condo? No. And is the social housing, um, being put forward or done in a way that I feel is ghettoized? No. Um, so for that reason, I think that it is really important. Um, not only am I going to say I support this part of it, but I really like where this is going and how this text amendment fits in to the overall project. So not only will I be supporting this, but I appreciate the work that's been done to get us here. And what are our choices here? We know inaction doesn't work. We know waiting doesn't work. And to any of my colleagues who are thinking about voting against this, just walk by Little Mountain. There's a park there, it's all gated up. There's a couple of social housing buildings. The price of market housing there today versus what it would have been ten, fifteen years ago. So we don't have a crystal ball, but we can learn from our mistakes in the past. And we've all, we've all supported, um, moving forward, more affordable housing in our city, and tonight we have an opportunity to do that. So I will be voting in favor of this, um, not just for the people of Vancouver today, but the people of Vancouver tomorrow as well. And I appreciate the legacy that this will leave in the city of Vancouver. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that is it for, uh, council comments, so I'll move it to the vote. Councillor Dominado, there we go. Uh, that has passed with councillor Hardwick in opposition. Uh, thank you very much to, everybody did all the hard work, the proponents, the staff, folks that came in to participate. Um, right, so we're done for the evening. Could I have a?
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you. Councillor Hardwick, second by councillor Dejanova. All in favor, yay? Yay.
Yay.
Oppose, nay? We are adjourned. Thank you so much, staff. Three minutes to spare. Good work there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, good work. Thanks.
See you tomorrow. Bye-bye.